Any changes to the agenda?
Yes, there was a new employee contract added and you have the revised agenda at your place.
Okay. Is the motion to accept the agenda?
So moved.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Need approval of the October 25th, 2012 minutes or presented additions or corrections need to be known at this time. Seeing none is a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second to approve the minutes of October 25, 2012, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Those minutes are now official. Council members. Speaker Bruce Stanley, do you like to speak at this time?
No.
Okay. Any other councilman that...
Tenpenny.
Tenpenny?
Yes.
You want to speak at this time or you want to wait? Okay. Okay Brenda, oh Duane, let's see behind the post. Any other councilmen that I've overlooked? Items on deferral?
There are three items on deferral. The first item is item eight on page seven of the agenda. This is a request to rezone from OR 20 to specific plan mixed use for properties located at 2400 Crestmore Road and at 3813 and 3815 Cleghorn Avenue to permit hotel, office, retail, and restaurant uses. And the recommendation is to defer to the December 13, 2012 Planning Commission meeting. The next item is item number 11. It's also on page seven. This is a request to rezone from MUIA to specific plan mixed use zoning for properties located at the northeast corner of Grand Avenue and 21st Avenue South to permit a mixed use development containing a hotel, multifamily, and office and commercial uses. And the recommendation is to defer to the December 13, 2012 Planning Commission meeting. And the final item is item number 18 on page nine of your agenda. And this is a request for final plat approval to create five lots on property located at 3400 Leland Lane. It's zoned R10 and staff recommends deferral to the December 13, 2012 Planning Commission meeting. That's the end of the deferral agenda.
There have been requests for three items which are item eight, 11, and 18 to be on deferral. Is there a motion?
Second.
Got a motion second to defer items eight, 11, and 18, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Items on consent, Brenda?
Okay. Before I read the consent agenda as information for our audience, if you are not satisfied with the decision made by the Planning Commission today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for a writ of cert with the Davidson County Chancery or Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within 60 days of the date of the entry of the Planning Commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should contact independent legal counsel. Now I'll read the items on the consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the Commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the Commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. The first item on the consent agenda is item number two on page five. This is a request for final plat approval to create three lots on property located at 5440 Granny White Pike. And the recommendation is to approve with conditions and approve the variance to the subdivision regulations for lot frontage. The next item is item four. This is on page six of your agenda. It's a request to amend the zoning code to permit recording studios as home occupation accessory uses and the staff recommendation is to approve. The next item is item number five, also on page six. This is a request to amend the zoning code to require construction application and enforcement of the zoning code in accordance with federal law and staff recommendation is to approve. The next item is item number 12. It's on page eight of your agenda. And this is a request to rezone from RS 15 to AR 2A zoning for properties located at 931 Old Lebanon Dirk Road and the staff recommendation is to approve. The next item is item number 13 on page eight of your agenda. This is a request to rezone from OR 20 to OR 40 for property located at 1624 16th Avenue South and the staff recommendation is to approve. Item number 14, also on page eight, is a request to rezone from RM 20 to RM 40A zoning for properties located at 1808, 1809, and 1810 Marina Street and 925 and 929 Dr. D.B. Todd Jr. Boulevard. The staff recommendation is to approve. Now on to other business items. Item number 19, employee contract renewals for Jennifer Collett and Catherine Withers. The recommendation is to approve. Item number 20, amendment to the rules and procedures, section 7K rehearings. And the recommendation is to approve. And finally, item number 21, the new employee contract for Amy Diaz-Beriga and staff recommends approval. That's the end of the consent agenda.
Brenda, if you would, did you call out item 10 or is that going to be heard?
No, I just got information that it's been pulled from the consent.
Okay. Let me go back through these to make sure I've got these correct. And the items that you have called out to be on consent is item two, four, five, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17?
No, 15, 16, 17 are not on consent.
Okay.
It's 19, 20, and 21.
Philip?
I might pull item four so we can discuss that.
Okay. Okay Brenda, bear with me. I want to make sure we've got, when we approve these, that we've got the correct numbers. So if you would, go back through the ones that were on consent. I mean that's...
Would you like me to read the numbers?
Well, no, give me the ones on consent.
Item number two, item number five, item number 12, item number 13, item number 14, items 19, 20, and 21.
Commissioners, you've heard those items to be on consent. Is there a motion to do so?
Absolutely.
Motion second for items two, five, 12, 13, 14, 19, 20, 21 to be approved on consent. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Those have now officially been approved by the Commission.
This is item one on your agenda. This is a four-year review of the bluffs on Sawyer Brown SP which is located on Sawyer Brown Road and it the, we're looking to determine its completeness. The property is shown in red. It lies between I-40 to the west and Old Hickory Boulevard to the east, north of Highway 70. Staff is recommending that the SP be found to be inactive and that the Planning Commission recommend to the council that this property be rezoned to RS 80.
Brenda, we don't have this on the monitors.
Okay. Do you know how that makes out? Because I've got it on the screen. Maybe I'm not plugged in probably.
Go ahead. Craig, could you check on that for us? And go ahead, we can look at it on our, through our books to this item.
I'm sorry, I think I might not have plugged something in, but I'm not sure.
Craig will work on it. Thank you.
What are we not doing here?
I think I'm not plugged in to connect to that.
Okay.
Because you won't connect.
If you don't mind, just start over on that if you would.
I will. Okay, this is the four-year review of the bluffs on Sawyer Brown SP. The property is shown in red and it lies between I-40 to the west and Old Hickory Boulevard to the east and it's north of Highway 70. And staff is recommending that the SP be found to be inactive and that the Planning Commission recommend to the council that this property be rezoned RS 80. This SP, here is the site plan that was approved, was approved for 130 townhouse units. A site visit was made and there was no evidence of activity. The property owner confirmed that there has been no activity on this SP. And this picture that you're looking at at the top left is, I was standing where the entrance of the SP would be to take that picture. When an SP is found to be inactive, staff make a report to the Planning Commission and analyze the SP's consistency with the general plan and make recommendations to the Planning Commission for any amendments to the SP and any rezoning of the property. And then the Planning Commission makes a report to the council about the appropriateness of the continuation of the SP and any recommended amendments to the SP or rezoning of the property. The land use policy at the time of the adoption of this was residential low medium and the project density of 3.3 units per acre met the policy at that time. This property is characterized by steep slopes and also by problem soils. The Bodine Sulfur which is shown in red are prone to movement and the Del Rose Churdy Silk shown in green is weak and with fine pores and it's quite crumbly. Since the approval of the SP, the Bellevue Community Plan was updated and the land use policy is now natural conservation. This change was based on the information that was gained in May 2010 when there were a series of landslides on steeply sloped properties with similar soil characteristics. The plan calls out this undeveloped SP is one that should be reevaluated to bring it into greater compliance with the new policies if the opportunity arises. The four-year review process provides this opportunity. Here's an aerial view of the property. Staff is recommending that the SP be found inactive and staff further recommends that due to the steep slopes and problem soils on this property, the SP be rezoned to a lower density and that the RS 80 district is being proposed. If the Planning Commission agrees with the staff assessment, staff will prepare a report to council recommending that this property be rezoned to RS 80. If the council agrees with the Planning Commission recommendation, there will be a new case filed by the planning staff and the rezoning will have to go through the normal zoning process with the public hearing at the Planning Commission and at the council.
This item is open for public hearing. The applicant in this case is the Planning Commission. Anyone wishing to speak in support of the finding this inactive, please come forward. Is anyone that wished to speak in opposition?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, my name is George Dean. I'm a member of Nashville Bar and I'm here today on behalf of Community Bank and Trust which owns this property. Unfortunately, the original developer was foreclosed upon and the bank now controls the property. First, let me say that Ms. Bernard's is certainly accurate. There's been no activity on the SP and the revocation of the SP at this point certainly is appropriate. We don't have any concern about that. What rather we're concerned about is taking, it's about a 40-acre piece of property and dropping it from, on the SP it allowed 130 units, the RS 80 of course will drop it to basically 20 units with the resulting hit that the bank's going to take on the value of the collateral that they had from the developer. The other concern we have, so we're really looking to try and find a zoning district that would give us a little bit more return on that collateral rather than taking it all the way to RS 80. When you look around the zoning on the surrounding properties, as far as I can tell, none of them are zoned RS 80. The most spacious, if you will, look to be R 20. You can see on the map there, it's R 15 just immediately south of this property. And we'd suggest that based on the surrounding zoning that something like R 15 or even RS 15 works more appropriately. Let me also mention one other thing. One of the problems when you take a piece of property like this and reduce the zoning to such a drastic extent, it may mean that it's impossible to develop that property. If that's the case, then essentially there's no use left. As Ms. Bernard's quite accurately said, it does have steep slopes, the soils are a problem. It's going to have to be extensively engineered no matter how it's developed. But by moving it all the way down to 20 units, it really makes the task for the developer almost impossible. Thank you.
Just a couple of questions of you.
Yes, sir.
This is foreclosed property. How long has the bank been to say foreclosed?
You know, I don't know off the top of my head. I'll estimate approximately 12 months.
And do you know if they plan to do any marketing on this or any engineering in the next six to eight months?
It's up for sale. I've spoken to, Mr. Charlie Hooks is the representative of the bank that we're working with, and frankly, they look at it as we're bankers, we don't really know how to develop the property. We'd like to find somebody who knows about that, sell it to them, and get the heck out of Dodge basically. So they don't really have any plans of their own to do that. If there was a way to assist the Planning Commission in looking at how to zone the property, the bank might be interested in investing that if that was something that was possible.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other one that would like to speak in opposition? Seeing none is a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion second to close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Jeff?
No comments.
Derek?
I think staff had mentioned that there were some issues with the soils and what have you, and it also sounds as if the bank recently...
Turn on your mic.
And it also sounds as if the bank recently took possession of this piece of property. And I guess the question that I have is that Brenda, if someone took possession of this property, if they did the engineering, a high level of engineering, would we still have some of the same problems there in terms of developing this property for future use?
I think you probably could find engineering solutions that would let you have some density on this property, but I believe that the townhouse development is probably more than this property could support.
Okay. Thank you.
Greg?
I think I need some clarification. What specifically, could you explain what the zoning is, I guess, on all sides of the property? Some more?
Certainly. There is a number of PUDs that are already, that are approved around the property and most of the zoning is R 10, R 15, R 20 in that range. If you look at the steep slope map, the property that are at the lower densities are the ones that are on the flatter parts.
I would also just point out for the record that this was an area that had extensive landslide damage during the flood period. A number of houses in here that were on the parts down a little lower but had rear yards. I mean, you had a lot of significant landslide issues in this specific area. Okay. I mean, I understand that. I think with the information that I'm given today, you know, that I, I mean, I'm concerned that, you know, the bank could potentially lose a lot of money. And why did we first rezone it in the first place to that particular density when we knew the soils were there? You know, me personally, I would like to, you know, get some more analysis on the engineering and maybe in the soils. I don't think I'm comfortable, you know, just downzoning a piece of property to, that's not consistent with any other piece of property around it, without a little more analysis and somebody saying, you know, an engineer or somebody with some authority on this particular piece of property. Because I do think that when you have a piece of property that's developed, not developed but that's zoned a particular way, that the property owner, whoever that is, has some vested rights in that particular piece of property. So personally, I don't feel comfortable just downzoning and not having, I think, all the facts or more detailed facts. Because I think that it would put, even though the bank owns the piece of property, I think that it would, I think some rights do vest and that that needs to probably be looked at a little closer. That's my concern on this particular piece of property.
We do have to have a decision this evening, so we aren't in a position where we can defer because this, the Planning Commission has to act within 90 days of the initiation of the SP review. And this has already been deferred twice at the request of the property owner. So if no decision is made tonight, then the recommendation that goes to the council is that no zone change is proposed.
If I could just clarify one thing, this action would not rezone the property. It simply states two things, well, I mean, really, I guess, three things. One, that it's inactive. Two, that the current zoning is inappropriate. And three, that the council should consider an application to rezone that. Now, should the council accept that, should the Commission make that recommendation and the council accept it, then you would start through the rezoning process which could allow more definition of the appropriate rezoning. We've recommended RS 80. That could be something that would do that whole process and that would come back to the Planning Commission as well. So you would have... Well, if you have new application though, Rick, would, I guess, there'd be, what would the cost be for that? No, it would be a metro file. It would be no cost, it's not a cost to applicant, it'd be a metro file application. For the rezoning, right. Well, I think, me personally, the RS 80 seems a little low, but I'm not, I don't know if I'm comfortable, maybe we reduce it to more of the surrounding area. I mean, that's my thoughts. I mean, do we have information on why it was, when was it rezoned to this particular zoning?
It was done in 2009, I think. And as you can see, the policy at the time was the RLM policy which allowed two to four units per acre. And so the request, which is at 3.3 units per acre, did fall within that policy. And at the time, when the Planning Commission approved it, they did say that any development would require engineering studies before final site plan could be approved. That was one of the conditions of approval.
I want to hear what everybody else has to say. I might ask to come back if that's okay.
Brenda, did you say this was approved in 2009?
I'm sorry, it's August 2008. I'm sorry, August 2008.
Okay. Stuart?
Well, I think the whole idea of reviewing SP is something we don't do at every meeting, but we are having to do that a fair amount now. I guess that with the reinforcement of the idea that this isn't us rezoning but recommending that a bill be filed to rezone, that, I don't know what else we should do since we don't have specific engineering plans and we don't have a specific project to evaluate. Seems like the time to figure out what the science and engineering does in light of our recent experience of a lot of disasters that have been from 2010. It seems to me that we ought to revert it back to the last zone it had and then have somebody bring a bill forward for us to review. It seems like that's the general policy, not specific to this land but to any land where we're saying the SP is inactive. Sort of our request for someone, for the council or a property owner to initiate a new zone and the reversion is simply to a holding pattern till somebody comes forward to something else. That's the way I would look at it.
Derek?
Was RS 80, was that what the property was zoned prior to this SP approval?
No, prior to the SP it was R 15.
R 50?
R 15.
R 15. And is the RS 80 the most intense or least intense that would be appropriate under this policy?
The RS 80 is a very low-density policy. It would allow actually 21 units on it and given the difficulty of the development, the steep slope and the problem soils, the staff thought that a lesser intense policy would be more appropriate.
But under this, under the policy, and I know every property shouldn't necessarily is inappropriate for every possible zoning designation under that policy, but I'm just curious, under this policy, what's the range of...
There is no range in the natural conservation anymore. It used to be one unit per two acres and, but now it's really looking at the specific property to determine what would be an appropriate range. And given the slopes and the soils on this property, the staff felt that the lower density was more appropriate.
Okay. That's all I got. Thank you.
Judy?
Yes, thank you. That was my question, what was it zoned to prior to us approving an SP on it? So it's because we now have more information about this property in terms of what happened to it during the flooding that's persuading us to look at the rezoning at RS 80?
That's correct.
And the community plan changed.
And the community plan changed at the time.
That's correct, yes. Both factors.
So could we, well, we'll definitely find the SP inactive, but then when we make the recommendation to the council to rezone, we have to give them the rezoning that we recommend or just recommend rezoning? Do we have to be specific?
Yeah, it does call for what you recommend that we be rezoned to, right.
Okay. That's all I have.
Historically, when you find a SP to be inactive and you make a recommendation for the rezoning, has that, I mean, is this unusually big leap for the recommendation when you look at what's historically been done?
The last time we recommended one was the HTO SP which was approved for over 700 units. It was completely flooded during the flood and we recommended that actually go to AR 2A for the part that was in the floodway and floodplain and then the small portion that was not in the floodplain to go to MUL.
The rationale to go to say R 80 as opposed to say an R 40 or an R 50 or something like that, state that for me again.
Due to the steepness of the slopes and the problem soils, also this property has one way in and out. Staff believe that the lower intensity development was the best for the property.
Would you show those two slides again, that you had on the slope and the soil?
This is the soil and the slope.
The difficulty is, the only way to get to the developable portion, if you call it that, which would be the ridge line, is to go through either cut all the slope out or cut all the soil out, which are both problems. That's the difficulty of this thing.
Okay, so we make a recommendation, if we find this inactive and we follow the staff's recommendation here to do R 80, that's a recommendation to the council. And now, at that point in time, does the council lady have the discretion to modify that density?
Yes, the council lady, I mean, the council lady or presumably any council person could...
Oh, this is in Council Lady Weiner's district, I see, so she'd be the...
Right, she would be the right person. The recommendation goes and she could decide to accept the recommendation and initiate a rezoning petition or simply ignore the recommendation or to initiate a different kind of rezoning petition.
But either way, there's going to be a rezone and that's coming back to us then.
That would come back to you. I mean, assuming she initiates a rezoning, she couldn't choose not to.
Right. But if it is, if there is a rezone request, then it comes back to us and we have this discussion again.
Correct.
Okay. So I don't have a problem with the staff's report then.
Brenda, what is our, this was approved August 2008, so it's been five years and...
It's actually not from our approval, it's from the council approval. So the council approval was, today mine is six weeks, is when they did it and four years ago. We initiate the review at the four-year anniversary. So it was approved, I guess, by the council, I would say, in September of 2008.
Okay, so five years ago. But what's the timeline if, when we review these every four years and when this was approved in 2008, were we on, this commission on the timeline then to review these every four years? Is that regulation, we've come up with that since that time?
No, the, when the SP was adopted as a zoning district, the four-year review was part of that adoption.
Was it automatically part of that?
And so this was, this SP was adopted four years ago and it is reviewed, like all SPs, every four years until it's determined to be complete.
I just, I think our maps are correct. I think it's a site that's... I think it's a site that's not going to be able to be developed, except probably maybe at R 40, RS 40. But I'm like Greg, I hesitate to bind someone that's now taking this back. It was resold by someone that... By choice, they bought it. In this case, the bank didn't have a choice but to take it back. Hate to put them on a timeline of saying, "We're going to do this," before they've had an opportunity, if they want to, spend money on engineering. They may elect not to, then if they don't, then we take action on it. But unless there's a bill before the council that would automatically go through if we don't take action, I think it's appropriate to defer this for six months or nine months or something, give them an opportunity to make a decision whether they want to spend money on it or market it to somebody. I hesitate to do that.
The way the code is written is if we... If the Planning Commission doesn't act within 90 days of the initiation... And actually, I was wrong, because this has been deferred a number of meetings. It was more than September. It was... Must have been August. It was August, Ann was correct. If you don't make a decision in 90 days or a recommendation to the council, then it's deemed that you've recommended to be maintained as it is, if you don't act.
But this commission or the planning staff, planning department, I should say, was when initiated, right?
That's correct. We initiated because the code required us to.
Yeah. The code at the end of four years requires the Planning Commission to look at any SP, all of them. And you look at them and determine whether they're active or inactive. And if it's inactive, then you make a decision whether to continue it or to make a recommendation. The Planning Commission has 90 days, and if they don't act within that 90 days, then it's assumed to be acceptable to proceed, and that starts a new four-year cycle is the problem. So, it's not... I mean, you can defer that, but then it will not come back to the commission for the other... For another four years. I think the concern... I understand what the commission is debating. I think, though, that it might also be equally unfair to a property owner, or maybe not, maybe it's up to them to do their own due diligence, to purchase this with the expectation that they might be able to develop whatever it is, 160 units, which are probably very unlikely to be able to develop. But there's kind of...
But I don't think that the buyer that the bank sells to is going to know what that is till someone has an opportunity to do the engineering. I'm just saying, give the bank an opportunity to find someone, but, you know, say, six months from now, if we can do that, give them time to do it. But if not, then it automatically is found inactive. But I think that the 40, R 40 is probably... It should go back to the original zoning, no lower than that.
I have a question regarding the code. Once... If we were to make this recommendation to the council, is... Are there time constraints on the process?
They have six months to act to rezone the property. Or what's happened? When we've recommended to retain the property as is, as we have in many of the previous SPs that were found inactive, because they still met the policy, the council member... I report sent to the council, and the council member whose district is in lets me know if they're willing... They want to pursue a rezoning or not. And if they say they're not going to, then it ends. But if... They have six months to make that decision.
And then, the process is another three months or so?
That's right. And after six months, then, they wouldn't be able to initiate this bill and the planning department be the applicant.
So, there's, I guess, as much as nine months potentially to look at the property and go through the process and try to determine what the appropriate zoning is before the property ever gets actually rezoned, is what it sounds like to me. And with regard to sort of the vesting rights, I mean, when we put the SP in place, it sounds like we established this code that requires a four-year review. So, unlike a... Somewhat different than, you know, just regular base zoning, with all due respect to the bank that owns it now and to the developers who developed it, that was part of the risk they take and understand when the property was rezoned as an SP. So, I'm not sure that rights are necessarily vested, per se, inherent in SP zoning.
Greg?
Yeah, I wasn't on the commission when we determined the four-year SP review and all that. You know, one thing that I guess I need a little more clarification on the process of... For instance, if we did not act, then it would remain the current zoning, the current SP that it has. Our concern, if it's the soils, then my understanding from our process would be that any builder that says, you know, wants to go develop the property would have to pull a permit. And we, as metro government, would have to approve that. And so, if there was a problem with the soils, I'm assuming that the builder would only be allowed to build up to this particular SP, and that they would have to pull a permit to do that. My problem is, is that when you have somebody like a bank that, to no fault of their own, you know, the property gets foreclosed upon... And I think I have another question for the attorney for this property. Could you come back up?
Yes, sir.
And that's what's concerning me. I mean, I... It may be too dense for this particular piece of property, but once you pull a permit, you know, builder's only going to be allowed to build what the soils and engineering allows. Do you all have collateral on this particular piece of property and all that?
I think it was the collateral. It is the collateral.
The property?
Yeah. There was probably a mortgage on the purchase price of the property, I imagine, and unfortunately, the developer didn't survive the recession, and now it's ours or the banks.
Thank you. Me personally, I would say that at a bare minimum, you know, we should at least change it to an R designation instead of an RS designation. But, you know, my gut instinct is that with the bank, you know, to no fault of their own, that I'm for, me personally, deferral. And, you know, letting the property remain as is, and whoever, the developer that buys the piece of property, whenever they pull a permit, they'll be able to build up to a more... To a consistent level that the soils can handle and the slope. That's my own personal opinion because of the bank situation on this particular piece of property. But until I get a specific analysis of what the property can handle as far as engineering and slope and all of that, I don't feel comfortable just downzoning the property. And I think that it could potentially really affect the bank. That's my concern. So, I'm for deferral.
We may have that opportunity, though, if we take it through this process. If we defer tonight, it may never be done, and we'll be back here four years from now, potentially.
Potentially. I just don't think nine months is enough time. I mean, generally, foreclosed property, you know, things in the economy are coming back, but not at the point... I think it might be hard for the bank to even sell it on, in terms of if we move in the direction of changing the zoning.
If I could just answer two things. One...
I do appreciate those.
The four-year review was put in initially by the council when they adopted the SP ordinance. It was not something that came later. It was something that came because the SP ordinance was envisioned at that time as an ordinance for active projects. And so, it was intended to really not be for speculative projects, and I'm not saying this was, but it was for projects that were ready to go. And therefore, if it wasn't ready to go and started in four years, it needed to be reviewed in light of that. The other part is that the SP plan that has been approved has authorized the cutting of the slopes and the removal of the soils in accordance with that plan. So, if it's not... They can come in and get a building permit to do that plan, is the problem or the dilemma that we're at. Because the soils at that time were not... While they were thought to be difficult soils, they weren't thought to be soils that had created the problems that they did create during the flood.
Counsel, then I'll get to you, Phil.
There have been a couple of questions with regard to vested rights, so I just wanted to go ahead and shed some light, from the legal perspective, on that particular issue. And it would be our opinion that there are no vested rights on this particular property yet, because there hasn't been any construction begun. There hasn't been any water lines or anything that would normally allow for an assertion of vested rights. There is... There was some risk that was involved, and I understand Mr. Atkins' concern with regard to the bank in terms of taking on that risk and potentially having lost in that assessment of that risk, if you will. But wanted to make sure to clarify that vested rights, as we typically use the term and as, from the legal perspective, it would be viewed, it has not risen to that level at this stage. Just wanted to offer that clarity.
Phil?
I'm thinking through a process, and I guess I want to talk to it and see if I've got holes here that need to be plugged. But if we accept the staff's recommendation today, at that point, it goes to the council. The council lady has six months to move on the recommendation. Is that... That's correct. Okay. So, if we approve today, then the bank has the time to get with the council lady and say, "We need the time to begin to look at this property and see what it's capable of or not capable of." There's six months in there before the council lady has to come back with any kind of bill to the council. And then, if she moves through the process, is she limited to three months?
I think that she has to start the process within the six months. And I just want to clarify something about the process as well. If you defer this and take no action at this meeting, then the report that goes to the council is that you're recommending it remain the same. And she still can choose to rezonate within that six-month frame, because she doesn't have to agree with your recommendation. But she still has that same six months to act in. A deferral doesn't stop this process. It just makes a decision for you.
Okay. But once she picks up at that six-months level, if more time is needed on the part of the bank in questions that they're trying to answer, then she has the ability to defer the bills that moves through the process and give them additional time, which is unlimited amount of time, actually. Is that... Am I thinking right?
No, that'd be correct.
Okay. So, we're not really putting...
At least to this end of the term, anyway.
Right. Till the end of the term in 2015, right. So, we're really not placing the bank in any jeopardy. They still have options going forward without limitations, as long as they engage the council lady and she's working with them. Is that right? Okay.
The council pointed out, and Hunter pointed out, there's really... On the SP, and I hadn't thought it in that way, but there is no vested rights in that. But they do have vested rights back to the original zoning. So, I think if we find it inactive, that it would revert back to the original zoning. I think it's what we've done before in some of these others, that we just took the SP away, found it inactive, but the underlying zoning stayed intact. Is there a motion?
I would move that we accept staff's approval.
There's a motion, second, to accept staff's approval, which finds a recommendation that it be found inactive and be... Was the zoning on it?
RS 40. RS 80, just a recommendation.
RS 80 is a recommendation. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. Item number three.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, this is item number three on your agenda. It's a text amendment. It's a text amendment that proposes to add restrictions for the incineration of material into fuel products and asphalt within the definition of recycling facility and to the required conditions of a construction demolition landfill. A recycling facility, that definition is provided on this slide, is effectively a facility that processes, converts household waste and recyclable material so that it can be reused or sold to a third party. It excludes solid waste disposal. This text amendment, as italicized and underlined, would add the following language. "Conversion or transformation of material into a fuel product or asphalt through an incineration process shall not be considered recycling for the purposes of this definition." The text amendment also proposes to add a condition to those already provided for construction and demolition landfills. Construction and demolition landfills are permitted with conditions in a variety of zoning districts as provided on the slide, specifically in the industrial districts, IWDR and IG. The code currently provides six conditions that attempt to guide placement and mitigate impacts of such facilities on surrounding areas. This text amendment would add the following, the seventh, a seventh condition to those already provided, and the condition would be, the language is as such, "The conversion or transformation of construction debris, biomass, or other material into a fuel product or asphalt through an incineration process shall be prohibited on construction demolition landfill property." Staff is recommending disapproval of this text amendment. The conversion... The activity described in this or targeted in this text amendment, specifically the conversion or transformation of material into a fuel product or asphalt through an incineration process, has been and is classified as a heavy manufacturing use. As such, the described activity is already not permitted as a component or in conjunction with a recycling facility or construction and demolition landfill unless it's located in the IG district, where heavy manufacturing uses are currently and only permitted. This proposed text amendment would prohibit this form, this particular form of recycling in all zoning districts, including the IG district. And then, finally, Public Works is also recommending disapproval of this text amendment, as provided and described in the letter attached to the staff report in your packets. In conclusion, staff is recommending disapproval.
Thank you. This item is open for public hearing of the applicant, which is Councilman Bruce Stanley. You'll have 10 minutes to make your pitch, and if you'd like, you can keep two of that back for rebuttal.
I just want to take an opportunity to provide these to the commission members. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I thank you for the opportunity to address the commission at this time. I will say that there are basically two construction demolition landfills in Metro Nashville, Davidson County. And those two construction demolition landfills are... One, it's in District 14, C and D landfill. It's going to reach capacity by December of 2012. I've been informed that possibly this additional use, this incineration use on this C and D landfill will not allow for a post-closure care requirement by the TDEC. And that's when a landfill reaches closure, it has to close. And the owner or operator of that landfill is going to be responsible for making sure that that's a stable area. In addition, I've spoken to numerous officials of the Solid Waste Management Division of TDEC, and they've said they can't understand why a C and D landfill, any type of landfill, is allowed on a 100-year floodplain, especially in urban county like Davidson County. Because Davidson County, Metro Nashville and Davidson County is the most... It's the... Has the highest density of population of any county, any of the 95 counties in Tennessee. It has 1,243 people. And I think it's important that we look at these landfills and consider what impact these landfills, especially accessory uses, if it could be a portion of this land... these landfills, especially accessory uses, if it could be a portion of this landfill could be partitioned and rezoned IG. Now, of course, if it's going to be rezoned under my tenure as councilman, it's going to have to have the support of the community. And the community has said they will not support it. They did not support this construction demolition landfill when it was provided because they had no public hearings in 2000. I think it's important, too, that everyone understand that I have no difficulty with this type of incineration use being located on IG districts, in IG districts. It's heavy manufacturing. But I do have difficulty in partitioning a certain portion of a construction demolition landfill that's like CND zoned IR, and having that rezoned IG and then placing an enclosed facility where they can incinerate or burn roofing tiles, roofing shingles. That's what the gentleman has said that they would like to do. They would like to use this incineration to burn roofing shingles for industrial oil. But it exudes a noxious odor to the surrounding community. What's more, these enclosed facilities will release hazardous materials, especially because this CND landfill is located right next to, on the banks of the Stones River. It will release these hazardous chemicals into the riverbank, into the river. And that's one of the primary drinking water sources of Metro Nashville. I just, I have no difficulty with incineration in heavy manufacturing districts. I have no difficulty with that. But I do have difficulty with the fact that metro conditions that are set forth, they do not, they fail to mitigate potential impacts that a landfill has on the surrounding area, especially if they go into an incineration process because of the odor and the hazardous materials it can have. What's more, I would like the Public Works, I would like the Planning Commission to understand that I realize, and I want to state to Public Works, I'm appreciative of the work that they do, but I want them to understand that including incineration in the recycling process is a mistake. It's a big mistake. I don't have any problem with incineration being located in IG districts, but I do have a difficulty with it being located on construction demolition landfills throughout metropolitan Nashville and having a certain part of that construction demolition landfill partitioned and rezoned IG to allow for that incineration. And that will only buffer the pockets of the operators. It will not benefit the local community. The local community will be adversely impacted by the noxious odor, by the hazardous chemicals, by the traffic generated. I will say that in 2010, I was informed by the operators that by December 2012, this CND landfill will reach capacity. It will be no longer a CND landfill. But I feel like one of the things that they want to do is they want to have an additional use, industrial use, because it's zoned IR. And I think that they would like to have what's going to get them the most cash for their property, and that is incineration. But that incineration is going to have an adverse impact on the entire community, local community, whether it be residential, retail, recreational. I will say, finally, that Metro Nashville, just right across the Stones River from this CND landfill, has invested over $10 million in the Stones River Greenway. That includes a $450,000 payment for the construction of a wood walkway in 1999. I was on the planning, I was on the commission, the Greenways Commission, from 2001, 2003. I think it's important to understand that we did not even consider long or short-term effects that this CND landfill was going to have on this recreational opportunity, the Greenway, on the residents, on the retail operations. We did not even consider that. But now I would like for us to consider that because we are the most densely populated and densely developed community county in Davidson County, in the state of Tennessee. I think it's important that we consider incineration not an open recycling activity. And with that, I'll answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. You've got a minute forty-nine left for rebuttal, if you'd like to. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this text amendment? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
Will we close?
No, we've got something.
Good afternoon. I'm Veronica Fraser, and I'm with Metro Public Works. And we are opposed to this particular piece of legislation for several reasons. First, and I think most importantly, the CND facility that Councilmember Stanley referenced, there is currently regulations that can be enforced by metro codes that will not allow incineration. So there really is no need for this particular legislation just at that point. Secondly, we propose this ordinance because it could have unintended consequences by limiting necessary future expansion of waste and recycling in Davidson County. And that would not be in the best interest of Metro Public Works because we are responsible for monitoring and effectively managing Metro's waste stream. I also have with me Sharon Smith, and Sharon with Metro Public Works. If I left something out, I wish you would remind me. I know.
Let me see.
The TDEC regulates--
Yeah, Sharon Smith with Metro Public Works. The final point is that TDEC regulates landfills, they regulate their closure, post-closure plans. All landfills, no matter if they're a sanitary landfill or a CND landfill, are mandated by the state that they have to go through post-closure. They have to cap the landfill, they have to monitor it for quite a few years, they have to maintain it. So it's not something that the state waives or that we even have the authority to say could be waived. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Saying done, Councilman, you've got a minute forty-five, if you'd like to use that for rebuttal.
I'd just like to say that I appreciate all the work the Public Works has gone through to develop the recycling plan for Metro Nashville. I appreciate that. I think that's a necessity because we are one of the most or the most overpopulated or most densely populated county in Tennessee. But I will say that this incineration process, and when I had a meeting with the attorney for the Metro Council, the gentleman that brought this to my attention, he brought a sample of the oil that came from that incineration process, and it had an extremely noxious odor. It's going to generate an extremely noxious odor from this site if indeed a part of this site is rezoned to IG to allow for a type of incineration. But I think, too, that a number of people that access the Greenways on a daily basis have contacted me and have told me that they've seen displacement, dirty displacement from that CND landfill into the Stones River. And they are not appreciative of that. I think we have an obligation, as Metro Council and as the Metro Planning Commission, we have an obligation to regulate and monitor these problems as they exist. With that, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion, second, close the public hearing, all in favor, aye? Any opposed? Councilman Clayburn.
Okay. So currently, incineration can only occur in IG-zoned property. Is that accurate?
That has been, that's been where the zoning administrators come down. Looks at incineration of those materials, and it's called it heavy manufacturing, only permitted in the IG district.
Okay. So is that a zoning administrator's call or is that a code call?
It's the zoning administrator's interpretation of the code. So anybody who proposes a use has to declare that use with codes. They classify it.
Okay. So there's nothing in this bill that would prohibit a request for rezoning to IG, the particular property that the councilman is talking about, right?
I don't see--
Okay. So the bottom line is that if this bill passes, incineration wouldn't be allowed anywhere in Davidson County, regardless of zoning.
That's the way I read it. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Judy?
I'm not aware of--
You've got something you need to put the -- Hunter?
Can you clarify, I guess, the answer to that last question? Because this technically falls, this activity technically currently falls under the definition of recycling facility in our code?
No, the activity described, the conversion or transformation of material into a fuel product or asphalt through an incineration process, that activity has been classified as a heavy manufacturing use. And so it's kind of separate from a recycling facility. That activity by itself was classified as a heavy manufacturing, only permitted in the IG district.
So can you explain why the bill before us would prohibit this activity from happening anywhere in Davidson County?
Okay. That needs some clarification. It would prohibit this activity as occurring, occurring as part of a recycling facility and/or a land, construction and demolition landfill anywhere in Davidson County, not the activity itself. As a principal use, it could still be, it could still be permitted in an IG district. But this text amendment before you would prohibit that activity as part of a recycling facility and construction demolition landfill in any district.
And is it typical that this activity occurs at landfills, I would guess?
I think that's beyond my expertise. I am--
Yeah, Public Works staff may be a blaster there, yeah.
I'm not aware of a landfill of any type in Tennessee that has any type of incineration on it. But furthermore, part of the issue that concerns us is we meet regularly with people that are bringing in across the country and the globe new technologies for managing waste. And one of the new technologies is converting waste into fuels, fuel conversion. And that is a big part of our concern, is that you'll be taking away or trying to eliminate what Europe is already doing, what Japan's doing, what countries all over the globe are doing. But we would be looking here in Davidson County and saying, well, we don't want to have the option of expanding into new technologies.
Stuart?
It is an interesting set of arguments, and I guess I understand both sides of it a little bit. But I don't think any of us ever thought of the whole idea of a CND landfill as including this. I'm not saying it's a bad technology. I'm not really sure about what I think about that. Obviously, it could be regulated in a way that it wouldn't be bad. But it's a puzzle here as to whether it could happen in a recycling center, whether it's likely to or not. I know there's skepticism about CND landfills because we use that as a way to meet our state's recycling percentage requirement, which is not really. It's just a different way of dealing with waste, which isn't always reused just because it goes through a CND landfill. So there's all sorts of skepticism about how TDEC and local government deal with solid waste and recycling issues. I'm absolutely not positive it's a necessary, I'm not positive that it's a necessary bill to do what Councilman Stanley wants. But I also don't really see the downside of it, frankly. So maybe I'll get my mind changed.
Jeff?
No comments.
Derek?
I've yet to find, like Stuart, I have yet to find any reason to find fault in what's being recommended, nor do I find any fault in the disapproval. But based upon the information that I have today, I'll be honest, I do side with the council member on this, and I'm going to vote to approve the text amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, personally, I respect everybody's thoughts on this, but I think, I think from the testimony from the department, I mean, that makes sense to me. And I guess how I figure it is, if you pass this kind of bill, you take one tool out of the toolbox that might be, one day, maybe, used to meet our recycling mandates. And so for me, I'm going to side with the department. You know, I'm going to oppose, and I'm going to, I believe in the staff recommendation of disapproving the councilman's bill.
I'd like to make--
You mentioned other countries who use this type of recycling, and you've heard the concerns from the councilmen. How do they contain, and I'm speaking of Public Works, the noxious fumes and the spillage, possible spillage into drinking rivers and that kind of thing?
Well, a lot of these types of facilities, of course, are regulated by the EPA, they're regulated by state government, and in the case of incinerator, they're also regulated by our health department. And all of those agencies together, you know, this piece of property, I think, that the councilman's concerned about, which is a landfill, you know, if it came before Metro today, probably would never have been permitted because of its proximity, but it was there for a long time, and it was sort of grandfathered in. And current regulations are much more robust in ensuring that these type of facilities go where they are best suited and where they can benefit the community. There are so many different types of technologies out there when it comes to what they're doing with fuel conversion, that some of them are literally almost as simple as taking, you know, food waste or organic waste and processing it, very similar to what the water department does in the bio-solids facility. A very, you know, potentially similar product. And other options that are out there are completely different in how they take all the waste stream and they turn it into pellets that could potentially be used instead of coal. There are so many, many options. And that, our concern is that if we take away some possible future option, as Commissioner Atkins says, then that could, that a lot of countries in the world are turning to, then we limit our future capacity to reduce waste.
But are those places where they're doing that, are they located in urban centers and where there's, where people are living?
I can't answer that directly, other than to say they are located all over in Europe. And Europe, as you know, is, you know, a small continent with a pretty dense population. So my understanding and guess is that they're going to be, you know, located in urban settings because of, I think that the concern of--
Aesthetics.
Yeah. I can understand, but as far as where these facilities are located, they will be located probably in close proximity to easily, you know, transport material. You want to reduce how far you have to transport, you know, waste of any kind. So they tend to be located in, you know, in urban areas.
I also wanted to add, the word incineration, I think, is a lightning point for many folks. And when Sharon brought up the fact that there are just a variety of ways that companies throughout this country globally are looking at converting organics to energy, for example, and they may use the word incineration or heat-related-- organics to energy, for example, and they may use the word incineration or heat related, where attorneys advise us, that could be subject to lots of interpretation, where it would limit our ability to go forward and expand ways we might manage the waste stream. So I think it's important, it's just not burning everything and sending fumes up into the air.
And I guess that's the picture that I have.
Yes, and that's why I wanted to come up.
Yeah.
That's exactly what folks are seeing, because, believe me, it's been very informative and, and to see what's being done all over the world as, as far as managing the waste stream, because we can no longer continue landfilling our waste, we've got to go to more creative ways of managing the waste stream, and it's incumbent on Metro Public Works to be aggressive and proactive in, in addressing that issue in ways that are economically efficient and environmentally, environmentally meaningful.
One question, if this was disapproved by this commissioner today, of course, it's got to go to council, but if we disapprove it, does this allow someone then to do something once this bill goes to council and approved that they can't do today?
As far as, as it relates to our waste stream, they're still going to have to go, there's going to be other approval processes, including going before the Metro Solid Waste Regional.
Then short circuit any of those approvals, and it's just.
Yeah, no, yeah.
Stuart?
That's kind of what I thought, if, if the bill passes, it doesn't, it doesn't do any damage at all, I don't believe, given what you just said about the other approvals, but we also have a bill that specifically deals with not prohibiting this activity in the county, but prohibiting the activity in a construction demolition landfill property. That's all the bill does. I don't lightly go against Public Works or the staff recommendation, but I plan to on this one.
Counselor?
Okay, following up on that, I thought I understood at the beginning that this activity cannot currently take place on a CND landfill.
The activity described, the conversion and transformation material through the incineration process, can only take place in an IG district, either as a standalone use or as part of a recycling facility or CND landfill, only in an IG district.
So any of the other industrial districts, this is not allowed in?
Correct.
And, and so ultimately, Commissioner, this bill does say that this activity can't take place in IG. Is that correct?
No, not the way I read it. It seems to say only a construction demolition landfill.
Well, it, in the definition of recycling facility, it prohibits this activity, period, regardless of the zoning district. So if that recycling facility were located in an IG district, that activity still would not be permitted as part of the recycling facility, and the same goes for the CND landfill.
Right, and, I mean, I'm very sympathetic to the, the councilman's position and, and what he's trying to accomplish here, but I'm also very hesitant to totally close the door on future technologies, and, and if we, if we pass this, then we're doing that.
Well, I, if that's the case, then, then I'm probably the one to be for it, but I guess I'm having a problem seeing this, since it, the caption of the ordinance talks about construction demolition landfill property and not prohibiting the activity in the county. Is there?
Let me try to clarify, I'm not sure I can clarify. I believe that what the bill says is, you cannot do an incineration process anywhere in the county if you're in either a recycling facility or in a CND landfill. If you're in one of those two locations or those two businesses, you can't do an incineration activity. If you're not in one of those, a recycling facility or a CND landfill, you can do it as long as it's IG, it's way, it's been entered.
So would this prohibit then, go ahead.
And I was just going to say, and I guess we just, well, I need to just trust that Public Works are looking at the more advanced types of incineration technologies that are out there and coming down the pike. But question, how many IG Vs do we have in, in Davidson County?
How many?
How many possible sites do we have that this could happen?
I didn't quantify that, but IG is, is, those districts are few and far between. They're pretty remotely located around Davidson County. They're, they're not pretty prevalent, and they're usually located a fair distance away from sensitive uses, residential.
As they should be.
As, exactly.
Counselor?
Okay, I mean, where I'm hung up here and where I'm, I'm, we're confused, the last statement, this is on the, let's see, would be the, the second page of the analysis, the last paragraph, just before Public Works' recommendation, it says, "Further, this text amendment is written such that it would prohibit a form of recycling as necessary to recycling facilities and/or construction demolition landfills where it is currently permitted in the IG district. Since the IG is an appropriate district for this use, staff does not support excluding this use from the IG." So that says to me that if we pass this, then we're saying you can't do this in IG either. Am I wrong?
The ordinance only, you cannot do it if you're in a recycling facility in IG, you can't do it, or you can't do it if you're in a recycling facility anywhere, period, if this passes. You cannot do it in a CND landfill anywhere in this county, if it passes. You could do it in something else. I don't know what the something else is, you could do it as a standalone.
Business.
Business, or you could do it in something else, but that would still have, that would have to be in IG. Right, there, that would be the opportunity to do it in IG, in something other than recycling or CND landfill.
Okay.
Any other comments? Give me a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the staff recommendation to disapprove.
Second.
Got a motion second to dis, to go with staff recommendation to disapprove. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
Need a show of hands, all in favor, show of hands. Okay, all opposed? Motion carries. Item six. Item four, yeah, excuse me, item four, it was pulled off.
This is item four on your agenda, and this is a request to add rezoning studios as home occupations, and staff is recommending approval. Currently, a home occupation is an accessory use to a resident and subject to a number of conditions, and these include that the business must be owned by an occupant of the house, no clients could come to the house, only one employee who does not live in the house could be a part of the business, there are limits to the amount of the house that could be used for the business, no signs are permitted, and no outdoor storage. The text, a text amendment would allow recording studios as a home occupation with certain conditions. Up to 10 clients could come to the business per day, sufficient, sufficient parking needs to be provided off-street, the recording studio would need to comply with all existing noise laws, and all other home occupation conditions would apply, and staff's recommending approval of this text amendment.
Item is open for public hearing, and the applicant, are they here?
The applicant is Councilmember Barry, and she provided a letter recommending approval.
Okay, Councilman, you had asked this to be pulled off, would you like to speak?
You know, we dealt with a similar issue broader in scope in the council last term, and it was a very, a lot of emotion involved with it, a lot of discussion on, on both sides, and one of the harder decisions, I guess, that the council went through in, in the last months of that term. And so before this comes back to the council again, I just want the, the residency of the county to know that we've talked about this as a planning commission, and that the council has some basis for understanding what the, the planning commission thought about it coming forward also. So I, I just want the discussion out. I'm, I'm not taking a position at this point in time, but I think it's appropriate that, that we talk about this, since it, it affects everybody in this county potentially, and I think it deserves a discussion.
This item is open for public hearing, anyone wishing to speak in favor, if you would come forward? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, is the motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion second, close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Greg, I think you were probably in that council, weren't you?
I do remember this, I think it, it failed, you know, but it was, it covered a much broader, I think it covered every activity under the sun, and with this, I, I think that with the way the bill's written with some other requirements, we are music city, you know, and I think that it would, it would, I think it's reasonable within, you know, I think on these particular issues, you, you think about what other, your neighbor would say if you had some type of business, and, you know, do you have 20 cars coming by, and do you have 10 cars parking in your yard, and, you know, you're blocking the street all day long? You know, those become issues, but with, with the, the way that it's written with, with certain limitations, I, yes, there we go, thank you, with, you know, the up to 10 clients per day, the sufficient parking, compliance with noise laws, and home occupation conditions apply, I, I think that that's enough safeguards for, for this, you know, and my last thing is, you know, we are music city, and I would hate to limit some artists, since I think there are more artists per capita in Nashville, Tennessee than anywhere in the world, musicians. Those are my comments. I'm, I'm going to vote in favor of.
Derek?
I concur with my colleague here, in support of it, and I'm going to vote in favor of it.
Jeff?
To Phil's point, it does impact all of us. Big Kenny lives directly across the street, he's got a studio. I, I think the question I would ask is, are we, you know, begging for an enforcement issue? I, I think everything that the staff has written is adequate, and I'm going to support it, but are we going to really have an enforcement issue?
Stuart?
There was a time when I represented the adjoining, Music Row and the adjoining areas on the council, and it was a very divisive issue then about can neighborhoods exist along with Music Row? And it turns out they can, unless you expand it too far into the neighborhood, then, then if it becomes all business, then you don't have residential. But that's not what this does at all, this requires that it's a home occupant, it's where someone lives, and I realize there's always an issue of enforcement with all of our codes, but this doesn't allow anybody to create noise that you can hear off-site. It can't do it. Is that right? I think that's right. Well, a, a home occupation noise laws, I don't think allow you to apprehend through your senses, through, through hearing that, that a business is going on, you know?
I was just tied up with apprehend through your senses.
Which word?
It doesn't supersede.
Which word did you not understand?
It does not supersede the other noise laws.
Right, so anyway, I think because of the, the strict requirement that somebody's living there, they're part of the community, they're part of the neighborhood, and that it doesn't, it doesn't go quite as far as some of the earlier ordinances that, that had some trouble in the council, I think it's probably a very good step forward, and I'm glad to see it sort of narrowed down this term, and think it's something we should support as a way to not just promote business, but neighborhoods. Having people who are at home during the day is not a bad thing, it, it makes for a good neighborhood. I'm generally for mixed use anyway, and I think this is a pretty good, pretty good step.
Hunter?
I'm, I'm not familiar with the noise law exactly, nor am I familiar with our enforcement policies and practices, but I think this is a great idea.
Yeah, I, I'm a big proponent of home occupation business, and I just think that's the way it's going to go. I've actually been in one of these studios in a neighborhood to record, and, you know, they're really soundproof, they don't want the noise from the outside coming in, and certainly don't want the noise going out because of the sensitivity of the recordings, so I have no problem adding a recording studio to the home occupation code.
Counselor, back to you, you want to make a motion?
I just, I, I think if we, if we do this, and again, you know, there are arguments on both sides, but I think if we do this, then we're going to see in the, the months to come, similar bills coming from the beauticians who say, I want to have my beauty shop in my home, I want to have up to 10 customers a day, we're going to have the masseuse and masseurs and, you know, all of those other home occupation folks out there who currently are prohibited by law from having an in-home business that requires or that allows customers to come in and out all during the day. I think that we're, we're opening a door to see, you know, other, more specific requests for those home type of businesses, so I'll leave it to somebody else to make the motion.
I move, we approve staff recommendation to approve.
Motion second to approve staff recommendations. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So noted.
I'd like to know if our commissioner was singing in the studio or preaching?
Preaching.
Mr. Chair? The, the motion has already been taken, the votes have already been taken, but I did want to assure the board that there are provisions in chapter 11.12 that would address any kind of sound issues, and it's taken from the boundary lines of the adjacent property, and in, in terms of multifamily, it would be taken from the interior of the adjacent unit, so there, there is an enforcement mechanism there. It would be taken, typically those cases are taken by the police department to environmental court for enforcement, but it can, in this case, since it's a zoning code, it could be taken by the codes department as well.
This is item number six on your agenda, it's a request to amend the Nolansville Road Auto Mart SP specifically to add one 25-foot tall pole sign on the property as it exists. Staff is recommending disapproval. The property is located at the north west corner of Nolansville Road, Pike and McLean Avenue. The existing zoning, as I stated, is a specific plan for auto use. In this SP, the signage is limited specifically to a monument sign and building sign on the property. The proposed zoning, again, is to amend this SP to add one 25-foot tall pole-mounted sign to be located on the Nolansville Pike frontage. The South Nashville Community Plan, the policy identifies the property as a mixed use and community corridor center. In the policy, it specifically calls for signage along main streets to be pedestrian scale. Here's a, a view of the subject property as, more or less as it exists today. The applicant is proposing to place the sign, again, along the Nolansville frontage at the existing entrance to the property, and here's an image of the proposed sign, again, 25 feet in height, with moderate display area located along that corridor. And staff is recommending, in conclusion, staff is recommending disapproval as this request is not consistent with the land use policy.
Thank you. So item is open for public hearing, the applicant, if they're here, would like to come forward, you'll be allowed 10 minutes. You're allowed 10 minutes, you can keep two of that back for rebuttal if you'd like.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Jordan Heslip, I'm the third generation owner of Nolansville Road Auto Mart, where my grandfather started about 50 years ago, and now it's my turn to kind of take over and, and try to run a business there. Over the years, I believe, we started our SP back in 2000. Over the years, I believe we started our SP back in 2007. We've seen a steady decline, definitely in visibility, since we had to take our original pole sign down and put the monument sign up. I believe our walk, our drive-by traffic is down by about 25%. We've lost probably, actually not probably, over the last four years of having the SP, our sales are down about 100 year-over-year. I've been on the phone with customers, they're trying to find our lot. They're looking up. Every sign along the road, you can see there is a pole sign, generally between 20 and 30 feet tall. And probably along our corridor, from the 440 intersection all the way up to, really anywhere in Nolansville Road, all the way to Harding Place, we're the only pedestrian-oriented monument sign. Those are the main reasons, sales and visibility. And I understand the land use policy calls for pedestrian-oriented monument signs. The only problem being, our property is very close to the intersection of Nolansville Road and Thompson Lane, one of the busiest intersections in Nashville. Our property backs up, you can kind of see in one of those previous slides of the, of the full property, that's all, yeah, that's perfect, thanks, Wayne. That's all industrial. If you look, that back road is Grandview Avenue, and behind that is warehouses, all industrially zoned, and the CSX railroad. Very little pedestrian traffic. On a busy day where we're located, where our sidewalks are, we might get, you know, 20 pedestrians a day, maybe 30. So, and also, one of the big parts of visibility is traffic from Thompson Lane north, actually southbound traffic backs up north, and it blocks our monument sign to where it's virtually invisible to, to passing traffic, especially along the main hours, rush hour traffic, 3 to 6 from Monday through Friday. Our sign's basically invisible. It's addressing the building sign. The building is so far back on the property, it's almost dangerous for motorists to look there, to find it. So that's why I'm proposing this, this pole sign. And the pole sign would actually be further back on the property. I don't guess, I didn't really give you, it was kind of a zoomed-out picture, but I believe it has to be 20 feet from the road, and it would, you know, it would satisfy those conditions. But Commissioner, earlier, I guess, Gee, you said that you understood that some parts of the land use policy, I believe in one of the earlier public hearings, you said, don't exactly, you know, fit every property in that land use. And I think that this is a really good, this is really a definition of that. I can understand, and I think there's three other SPs with car lots. There are three other car lots with SPs. We were the first one back when it first came out, but they all do back up to residential areas, no industrial, so I can see where those monument signs would be needed there. But I just want a fair chance to be visible along one of the main corridors in Nashville. It's going to be a big, it's going to be a great sign. We're going to spend about $30,000 on it. It's not going to be painted, it's not going to be, it's not going to be wooden. It will, you know, make the property look better, and, and actually will let us be, be seen. So with that said, and also, it would probably block out the adult bookstore sign that's more visible going south and north of the road. So thank you for your time, and appreciate it.
You'll be allowed two minutes for rebuttal. Counselor?
Thank you, Commissioner, that I'd just like to speak in approval for this also. I look up and down Nolansville Road, that part of my district, and, you know, there's a lot of signage up through there, there's a lot of illegal signage. People overnight will put a sign up, and the next morning you go up, that sign will be there. The Hayslip family's been there, my gosh, for, I guess, since the 60s. They've tried to hear to every zoning, SP zoning that you could possibly have. And I think that, you know, that each SP has a little specific here about how do you want to do things on that property? And I think this sign would really help them. Like Jordan was saying, the monument signs, they look great and everything, but they're very, you know, they're, they're just eye-level signs. And deer in traffic cars, you, you just really can't see the facility no more over there at the lot. So me, as a councilperson, I would, I would like to see the commission approve this. I think it, I think it'd be good for my, my area over there on Nolansville Road. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone that owns, wishes to speak in opposition? Seeing none, is the motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion second, close the public hearing, all in favor? Any opposed? Jeff?
I hate to go against staff, but it seems like every now and then, depending on the area and the neighborhood surrounding the applicant's property, and in this case, this makes sense, I'm going to support the applicant and the councilperson.
Rick?
What, remind me, was there, he's, apparently this business has been there for a while, and he has a monument sign, and I'm just trying to figure out, was there a trigger as to something that happened that caused him to have a monument sign?
No, let me, let me try to clarify this. Their, their original business was, I don't know, maybe two blocks in closer to town on the other side of the street. They bought this property and moved here, and at that time, they were required to have an SP, so that's, that was the problem. Yeah. Or that's the issue, anyway.
Okay. All right. I'm, I'm torn on this one, and I want to hear from the rest of my colleagues.
Rick?
Well, I, yeah, yeah, counsel, you want to answer?
Just like to say, when you first purchased that property, it was CS, and when they expanded it, they expanded it, is when it went to an SP.
Thank you for that clarification. You know, I'm just glad to see that, that it's not a, you know, four-by-eight piece of plywood. You know, I used to represent the district just south of here, and a lot of the, the business owners, you know, may not take care of their signs and have illegal signs. And, you know, this is a family that I am very aware of, and I'm, this is, would be an improvement to, to this particular area. And, you know, it's got a CS feel to it. I know that, that the SP is there, but if there was ever an instance, there used to be a large pole sign there, I'm assuming, and, you know, it's very appropriate for the area. Those other pole signs along this road are going to be there for 100, 200 years, and so this is one instance where I think it's very appropriate, and I'm glad that it's an improvement in the area. And so I'm, I'm going to support the bill, and I don't mean to be voting against staff recommendation twice in a row tonight, but appreciate you all.
Stuart?
I think probably one of the more consistent things that commission has done over the last few years is try to support efforts to reduce sign pollution in that area. And I'm not saying this specific sign is going to be polluting and be anything near as bad as it was in Councilmember Atkins' district, but, that was a joke. But, but I just, and I realize that, that there are different ways to look at this, especially when you try to retrofit something and have some gradual improvement. It doesn't seem fair, since everybody else has a different kind of signs. To me, the area would benefit by continuing the, the land use idea of reducing the amount of signage where possible, particularly when, when, when the steps are even taken. That would just be my thought. I don't mean any disrespect to that particular family or councilmember, but that's not really something that we think about when we make rules and make decisions as a planning body as opposed to an elected body.
Hunter?
Rick, could you remind us of when, when this was addressed with the auto SP? Could you give us a little bit of the history and the intent?
Just, I'm trying to think, it's probably eight years ago now. The council felt like that there was an overproliferation of auto lots in various, along various corridors. And so what they did was, they removed auto lots or car lots from the CS zoning district and set those up that they require them to be done through an SP. Part of that was to deal with issues such as the number. There were some spacing concerns and all that were at least issues that were there. The other was to make sure that there were, there was a, I guess, maybe a level playing field, equity between them. And so basically, since then, there've been a series of general criteria that have been recommended by the staff, and the council has, has adopted, that deal with the knee wall, which you see here, and deal with monument signs and building signs and those types of things, and sidewalks, and all of which they've complied with. The staff has recommended disapproval, just because we have never recommended approval of a pole sign in, on an auto SP. There's a number of signs that are here. This is generally, I think, consistent with it. I would like, if the commission approves it, I'm still want to get with the applicant and the, and the councilmember, just make sure, because there's, there's a spacing and consistency of the signs in this area on both sides of the street. I think one probably similar to that, spacing and size is probably would be consistent. But it, it does open up the issue of, of change, and whether it's unique to this would be important, I think, to staff as opposed to the generic way that auto SPs are being treated. We are in the process, just for your information, of drafting an ordinance amendment that would incorporate some of these and not require them to go through an auto SP, but allow them as uses with conditions. And that you'll see in the next couple of months, I guess, sometime there. So as opposed to requiring property owners to have to go through a rezoning every time.
So are there standards that are consistent with all of these SPs or, and that are written, written into the code?
They're not written into the code. They're part of the staff recommendation. They were part of the general parameters. We presented the commission, when these first started, with a set of policy parameters, and we've been using those. So they're, they're policy directions the commission gave to staff six years ago, so. And they deal primarily with, like I said, the knee wall, the signage, access to sidewalks and all that, so.
Doesn't deal with landscaping?
I don't think so. Just, I don't believe it has, does have a landscape, I don't think it has a landscape requirement, no.
These are generally more urban, I mean, they're, they're intended to be a more urban field.
Okay, thank you.
Judy?
Yeah, just looking at this picture, I can see how people could miss this particular business. It seems like they're a handicap. We've asked them to have the knee wall. The knee wall is there, but then you have these light poles, so the only place for the monument sign, the way it's turned, you wouldn't see it coming from whichever way that is. I understood the applicant to say that the, if they constructed this pole sign, that it would sit 20 feet into the interior of the business. Is that part of?
Was that correct?
Twenty feet from the road, so including the sidewalk, and then 20 feet from the sidewalk or the street.
Actually, the, the code only requires a 10-foot setback for a sign with this kind of clearance.
Yeah, and, and as far back as this business sits, I could see how they have some issues here. It's right on the corner of Nolansville Road and Thompson Lane, which is a really busy intersection in itself. Is there only one way into this business? So if I passed it, if I passed it, oh, and then I could turn that corner. You know, working with the staff and putting some conditions, you know, that they work with the staff, I probably, I don't know, and I'm the sign person against signs, but anyway, I'll listen to the councilmen's wisdom.
Counselor?
I guess the only question I have is, is 25 feet, is that compatible? Do we have any measurements on other pole signs in this immediate area?
I didn't research permits for, for signs.
I think, I think there was some pictures that started here that ended down there that may, may show some of that.
It seems like most of them range between 20 and 30 feet in the vicinity of the street. There are some exceptions. There's a billboard across the street that seems to reach to the sky, but most are between 20 and 30 feet, it seems.
I get, the reason I was asking the question, I, you know, I agree with a lot of what's already been said about the unique positioning here of this particular place, but I would hate for us to approve a 25-foot sign if all the others in this area were 20 feet. I would want to see a consistency in, in what we're doing here.
I think there is a consistency. That's what I had mentioned, of trying to work with the councilmember. I just, I couldn't tell, I've been there a lot, I can't tell if it's 20 or 25 feet, but I think that, I think they've tried to be consistent. I just would like to work with them, make sure they are consistent in height.
Condition that they work with, which is that.
Yeah, when this came about, I went up and looked at the signs and the measurements of the sign. They're within, within, you know, four or five feet of each other, yes, some 20, some 25, but they're consistent to any other sign that's going up and down on this road there. So they are, they're right there in, in the ballpark of the other signs.
Yeah, and just, just to mention, the CS standards allowed 40, and it was obvious that there was not 40-foot signs through here, and that was, I think, something consistent with that, would, it should be consistent with what's out there.
That's about all the footage of them, up and down through there. Unless somebody else has a comment, I would like to move that we approve this with a condition that the sign be consistent with the height of other signs in immediate area.
I'd say just with the signs, the height, there's more than just. Height? You know, there's width and everything. I would just say that, Councilman, that it should be consistent with all the signs in the area.
Okay.
Pole signs.
Work with the staff.
To work with the staff.
Hunter, you had a comment?
Yeah, I mean, this is just frustrating, because you look at this picture, and with no disrespect at all to the property owner, I'm not sure the SP is achieving what, you know, what it was intended to do. And now, and we're applying standards on that, you know, I can understand the frustration that their signs aren't really visible from the majority of the traffic that's there, which is automobile traffic. And maybe our monument sign size recommendation should be bigger, or, you know, I don't know, maybe, there seems, I mean, besides the low wall, which I'm not sure really does a whole lot in terms of improving this corridor necessarily, it's a nice wall, you did what you're asked to do, but, you know, I'm not sure we're really doing anything here with this ordinance. And so I'm, I'm really glad that the staff's looking at this, and maybe there's some landscape standards, trees would be nice on these corridors. I'd be, you know, probably okay with this type of signage if there were other things that would improve these, these corridors. So, but, you know, I think, you know, if, if we allow this sign, it's going to basically suggest, I don't see a big difference here than any other property along, in CS corridors, frankly. There's, it's on a corner, they could have a secondary access there. It pretty much looks like every other CS area in town. And so I think by allowing this sign, we're basically opening the door to do it on all of these, and then I just question the reasoning for the SP ordinance in the first place.
Counselor, when you laid a motion that we approve staff, or approve this with the condition that the height be consistent with the other signs in that area?
Well, the, the height, basically, that the sign be consistent with other signs, but especially the height.
Did you make, was your comment, was that a second? Okay. So we've got a motion, a second, to approve it with the height being consistent with the other signs, you know, that block, or what, where do we start and end with the, with the height?
There's, there's a consistency, really, for almost this whole corridor, almost the 440. I mean, they're generally, there's a strong consistency of the signs in here. So, I mean, I think that we could work with the applicant to make sure that it's consistent with it. There's just a uniformity on the signs through here for some unknown reason.
Okay, so the, the motion would be to approve with the sign consistency we worked out between the planning staff and the applicant. Rick, okay. Got a motion, second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No.
I'm staying on the one to figure what to think about it, but I'm not sure.
All right. Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, before we go on, and while this image is up, on a totally unrelated subject, I couldn't help but notice, could we keep that image up, please? That still, with everything we do as accounting, we can't seem to coordinate NES and our, our sidewalk locations, especially with a locations, especially with a new sidewalk handicap accessible. It's just unbelievable.
I've got to get out in the street in my wheelchair and go around.
I think in this instance, the poles came before the sidewalks did.
Yes, sir.
Item 7 is a request to rezon property located at 515 South Gate Avenue. This is in South Nashville. The property is outlined in red. This is across the street from the Nashville Public Television Station and Fall Hamilton Elementary. The fairgrounds is just off to the east, which is to the right of the screen. Property is approximately a little under half an acre in size. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without conditions. This is a view of the site. Currently, the property is vacant. There are sidewalks along South Gate Avenue. There are not any sidewalks along Carvel. This is another view of the site. You can see that at once, before it was, the structure was demolished, it was used for daycare. Looking down, the picture on the top is looking down South Gate from the east, looking towards the property. You can see the school bus on the property and then looking at down Carvel on the bottom. The existing zoning is single and two-family residential R6, permits single-family and two-family lots with a minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet. It would permit three lots, and all three of those would be, could be duplex lots. So in reality, it could permit up to six units. The proposed zoning is specific plan, and it is for residential development, and it is to permit six residential units on one lot. This is the site plan. It calls again for six units, units range between 1,600 and 1,700 square foot. The SP limits the height to two stories. There is a 10-foot landscape strip along the western and southern property boundary adjacent to the single-family residence. Access for each of the lots, there are, two of the units are addressing South Gate. They have front driveways access, and so there will be two drives on South Gate. The four units on Carvel will have two access drives with parking at the back. The plan also calls for a right-of-way dedication, which is consistent with the major collector street plan. As you can see, Carvel currently is approximately 25 feet as far as the pavement width, so it'll be providing a little wider pavement along Carvel as well as an addition of a sidewalk along Carvel. This is in the South Nashville Community Plan. The policy is neighborhood general that promotes all types of residential, including single-family, two-family, and multifamily. The proposed plan is consistent with the neighborhood general policy. Also, as is stated in your staff reports, is that this request meets several critical planning goals by supporting infill development, creates walkable neighborhoods, and provides an additional housing choice in the area. In conclusion, staff is recommending approval with conditions and disapproval without staff conditions.
Items open for public hearing. Applicant be allowed 10 minutes. You can keep two of it back for rebuttal if you like.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. My name's Michael Garrigan, 516 Heather Place. I'm a civil engineer with Dale &amp; Associates, and we're the consulting firm representing the owner and potential developer on this project. As Jason said, what we have is a 20,000-square-foot R6 lot, which could be split into three lots, each containing a duplex. So this is not a SP for density purposes. This is more of an SP for design purposes. The SP allows a lot of flexibility. One is, the major one, quite frankly, is since this is in the UZO, if you had the six units that are currently granted today under the R6 zoning, they would have to be attached. My client's a single-family home builder. He wants to build single-family homes. There are some duplexes down Carvel, but along South Gate is predominantly single-family. So that was the main goal. It also allows flexibility with design as far as setbacks go. It allows us to address the street more in lieu of more suburban-type developments with 20-foot setbacks and parking in front. We can come up to 10- to 15-foot setbacks, have parking in the back for four out of the six units. The benefits of the SP really are, there's a lot of benefits. A couple of the main ones are landscaping. If you develop this under just subdivision, or three-lot subdivision, go to the code, pull a building permit, you're planting maybe a tree a unit or a tree a lot. Under this plan, we've got both a buffer yard around, but we also have TDU requirements. The urban forester reviews our plans. He approves our plans. He inspects it when it's planted. Under three lots, Steve may correct me if I'm wrong, may or may not come under grading permit control. Under the SP, it absolutely comes under grading permit control. So we have to provide water quality and quantity, just like anybody else does. Our plans are proposing to do it through, you know, attractive and low-impact ways, through rain gardens along Carvel, building a sidewalk along Carvel. Lot of benefits of this plan. We really see this as a big positive. My clients built between six and seven homes within a mile of here in the last two years, sold all of them. 600 South Gate is two parcels to the west. He sold that, I think, two years ago for $240,000. He built six homes recently, some of them maybe under construction, I'm not quite sure, on Hamilton. They're all in the 500 block. It's two streets to the north, all single-family, all cottage-style architecture, and have all sold or are listed at between 220 and 240. So very positive project. We have heard some concerns from the neighbors, and we've discussed this with council lady Moore. We're going to have the meetings. Obviously, we're going to have the meetings. We like to get through the planning process and then have the legislative process work itself out. But the concerns we've heard mostly have to do with size of the homes, architecture, building materials. Are they rentals? Are they going to be sold? Easy answers to that question. 1,600 to 1,700 square foot, two stories, hardy and brick, no vinyl. They will be sold. They will be single-family, and the basement level asking price will be around 210, 214. So again, it's a very positive project. We're very excited about it, and we hope for your support. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Please come forward. Give us your name. Be allowed two minutes.
Hi, my name is Susan Heffernan. I live on Neal Terrace, which is parallel to Carvel. I used to live on Carvel, right next to the daycare center in a duplex. And sorry, I don't know my SPs, IGs, and UZOs very well, but I certainly can look at pictures, which my new friend Michael gave me. We are concerned about the size of these houses. Our houses have four, there's four lots. If you would go back to that picture right after the NPT. And Carvel actually used to be called Carvel Alley, the other one that was just black and white. That's it. So these are single-family houses. My house is less than 900 square feet. These places are almost twice as big, and we're just worried about that. There is no sidewalk there right now to widen the street. Will be quite an undertaking. And basically, if it's only three houses, we just don't want them to be that huge to, you know, to encroach on our neighborhood because those four lots in back of it all have houses that are right around 900 square feet rather than 1,600, 1,700. And we'd also like a fence built, if at all possible, in between that property line. Thanks.
Thank you.
I live on Allison Place, and my concern is is congestion. You take in a lot where there was two homes, and you're going to put six. It's going to be very congested. Carvel is a single entry. It's not a double entry. You can either go one way or the other. Two cars cannot pass at the same time through that from South Gate to Wedgewood. So my concern is congestion, and you're putting these large homes on these little-beady lots, and there's not even a driveway between these homes. It's just enough, you can reach out and touch your neighbor. It's just a little bit too close. And if they're going to be family homes, that means they're going to have children. So it's going to be very, very congested, and there's nowhere for these kids to go. There's no sidewalks. South Gate is a very busy street. My concern is also Carvel because it's a one-way in, one-way out. There's nowhere for these kids to go. There's nowhere for elderly people to go, and the houses are just going to be too big for that lot. You tore down one house where there used to be two, and you're going to put six. I just don't see how that's going to work for our area. It's just too big. It's too much. You mentioned that they had built some houses on Hamilton. They are single-family homes, one home per lot. They're beautiful. We don't have a problem with that. Maybe you could put two nice homes here, be perfect, but six is just going to be too much for that area, and I do have a concern with that.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? The applicant, you've got two minutes for rebuttal if you'd like to, if you would. I think you mentioned this, Carvel is going to be widened some of the pavement. How wide will that end up?
That was going to be one of the first things I said. We are required by Public Works to improve the right-of-way to two lanes along our front edge with the sidewall, curb and gutter, grass strip, like a standard public right-of-way. In addition, the fence, we can obviously work that in. No issues there. We've already got a buffer yard proposed along there. And, you know, I just wanted to point out real briefly, you know, it's a lot that's currently is on for six. So it's allowed by right for six. So we're asking to do six in just a better, a more creative way, in a better planned way, in lieu of just a hodgepodge that you'll see in other parts of town where builder A builds a duplex, builder B builds a duplex, and they don't match. So the houses on Hamilton that she spoke of, they're beautiful, same builder, same client, same home, different project. So thanks for your support.
Thank you. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion, second, to close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Jeff?
No comments.
Derek?
No comments.
Greg?
I'm just talking a lot tonight. I apologize for that.
You're speaking for three people here. They won't tell me that.
I think I want to say I appreciate the neighbors coming up and addressing some concerns for the property. I think that it's imperative that the builder and the engineer and that they work with the community and the neighbors to make sure that this project is not overbuilt and that it's a project that you all can be proud of. I think the key here is by right, they can have three duplexes with the current zoning, and there would be three larger houses there than what you're seeing in this particular picture. And so I think that it's imperative that the neighbors and the builder get together to make this a win-win, and I think that you all are on the path of that, but I think that that's critical. The SP seems to make more sense from a planning and design perspective, and there's good things about this. There's the infill piece, there's the better landscaping piece, there's the better road piece, the sidewalk piece. I think that it has a potential to become something that everyone can be proud of, but it's going to take you guys getting together. So I'm going to support it because I think that it makes sense on a design standpoint with the understanding that the builders, you know, work with the community, but I think that this can be something that could turn out well.
Hunter? Judy?
To just want to assure the neighbors and thank you for coming, but that this is probably the best plan for this piece of property. I know it seems like six, three, but let me just ask you, staff, about the character and the size of the homes. One neighbor mentioned they didn't want the houses, I guess, to overshadow their homes. And we've seen pictures like that. You have a house here, and you have this great big house here, and it's blocking light, and you look out your window, and you can only see that.
Yes, and what was pointed out by Commissioner Atkins is that under the current zoning, I mean, you could build up to 50% of the lot and stay in within three, permit three stories. You could be five feet of a side yard setback, so you could actually build a much larger home there today. And if you came in with a subdivision, then you could build a much larger home.
Even if it's not in character with the.
Correct. I mean, if they came in and just wanted to do a simple subdivision and it met all our subdivision regulations, then we would most likely recommend approval, and it had approved, and then they'd come in for a building permit, and then we would never see that part. They would just pull a residential building permit through codes, and as long as it meets those bulk standards, they could build whatever. So you got a height limit of three. So in this case, their maximum heights, two stories, the footprints of the homes are much smaller, so you're actually getting something smaller than what's currently permitted there today.
I think that with, thank you so much, and then with the, and it seems like the developer was willing to talk to the neighbors about a possible fencing or more buffering. So that would be good, if they continue that conversation too. Thank you.
Counselman? Okay. Is there a motion?
Motion. Second.
Motion, second, to approve staff's recommendations, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The members of the audience, we're going to hear item nine, which has to do with Iris Avenue. Item 10, at that time, actually, we hear item nine. If there's no one here, the person that asked that to be taken off of consent, if there's no one here to speak in opposition, that'll be put back on consent. And then we're going to take a break before we hear the remaining items, so.
Okay, item nine is a request to rezon property located on Old Hickory Boulevard and Iris Avenue in Lakeview. The property is outlined in red. Property is currently occupied and is by a tire business. It is my understanding that the permitted use or the use that's going on today is illegal. They've been cited, they've gone to court, so they are now seeking a rezoning to provide a use that would permit them to continue to operate. Staff is recommending approval with conditions and disapproval without conditions. Here's another view of the site. The existing zoning is mixed-use limited, which permits a variety of uses except for the use that's on there today. So it permits office, residential, mixture of those uses, as well as commercial. Proposed zoning is specific plan auto and is to permit attire sales and also all uses that are permitted under the current zoning of MUL. This is a plan. It's basically a regulatory plan. This was drafted by staff members at a request of the council member. The plan basically limits uses, signage, and it has some other standards. So basically, it limits the uses to tire sales and then all the uses in the MUL. It also limits the number of driveways, so the driveways it has now, that's what it's limited to. It limits signs to basically the signs that are on the property today. Basically, this thing was crafted to permit exactly what they have on the property today. So it permits an awning sign, it permits a building sign, it does not permit any pole signs, freestanding signs of any nature, so. And then the one issue that staff does have with the proposal is that it does permit outdoor display, which typically, this is one of those items that we don't, and the SPs for the auto SPs, we don't typically encourage outdoor display where you see the tires stacked up all along the streets. So that is, a recommendation of our approval is that that be removed and that outdoor display not be permitted. This is the Donaldson Hermitage Community Plan. Policy is suburban mixed-use corridor. This promotes a variety of uses, commercial, office, and residential, and a mixture of those uses. The attire sales is somewhat of a retail use and is contemplated under the policy and can be supported by the policy. In conclusion, staff is recommending approval with conditions and disapproval without staff, without conditions, as the request is a use that's permitted by the land use policy.
Items open for public hearing. Applicant and the audience, if they'd like to come forward, to be given 10 minutes. Applicant in this case was a trustee for the property and the planning department, so there may not be another applicant here. Anyone wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
Good evening. My name is Jay Voorhees. I am the president of the Old Hickory Area Chamber of Commerce, which is a community group that is charged with dealing with economic development in the area. And we actually come to speak against this rezoning, and we have three major reasons. The first one is, is that this business was established and put into operation without going through the proper procedures to have zoning done on the front end. We believe that that's not fair to the businesses, the businesses that are our members, that go through the process correctly, to make sure that they've checked everything on the front end to get everything in place. So we oppose this because we believe that they've circumvented the normal process and are now trying to fix something that they should have done on the front end. The second reason we oppose it is that we just have an overall lack of confidence in the ability for the conditions of the SP to be maintained. The SP, the conditions that Mr. Swaggart is talking about, talks about removing the tire displays, which we understand. It also talks about outdoor storage of tires. Currently, the property has tire displays on it. It has outdoor storage of tires. That diagram is a little bit misleading because it makes it look like that entire structure will be used for the tire store. In point of fact, only the front half, or not even the front half of the structure, it's really almost a shed that's attached to that house, is being used for the building, for the structure itself. So we don't believe that there's any place for them to store tires inside whatsoever. So we are just really concerned about the ability to comply with the SP. And then the last reason, and this may or may not matter, but it does to us, is that as an organization that's charged with trying to enhance the economic development prospects of that corridor, the Old Hickory Boulevard corridor, we believe this is just another business that detracts. We have more than our share of tire stores, of auto repair shops, of used car lots. And so we, as a chamber, are really trying to encourage other uses and trying to bring other businesses into the region. We believe this works against that. So we ask that you disapprove of this zoning change.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
Yes, please. Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the commission, I'm grateful for the opportunity to address this board, and I thank you for that. I'm Kathy Hance McKeller, a resident of the Lakewood, Old Hickory, Rayon City area. And I represent a segment of our community that desires to see this commission uphold the established standard elected by the former city of Lakewood referendum election that resulted in the implementation of Metro Davidson County's Tennessee zoning and land use plans to our corridor and area. The planning staff did an excellent job at that time in maintaining the closest-like zoning and land use that had been agreed upon by the citizens of that area at that time. We are acutely interested in the vibrancy, health, and economic future of our corridor. This request for rezon would permit yet another tire facility that our community does not find viable. The limitations of the size of this property would require any vehicle maintenance, including the change of tires, be done in the parking lot of the business, with the storage of inventory also in public view. We had a community meeting regarding this business a few weeks back. And there was, at that time, voiced by many citizens, a request that that not go forward and that the landowner at that time withdraw from the use of that property in such a manner. On behalf of the 25 others that have signed the request, who were quickly contacted, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, is a motion to close the public hearing. Motion second to close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Counselman?
Is this a building that existed prior to the annexation of the Lakewood area?
Yes, sir.
So this was an existing business, and so now it's being caught in the current Metro code as a non-conforming? Is that...
No, no. I think the use that's there today, the tire sales use, from what I understand, is fairly new, is that it was some other type of commercial business and then I think after, it was probably after Lakewood that they opened up the tire shop. So it's not something that, it's not a use that was in Lakewood before Metro took it over and then it became incompliant with the zoning. It was done after the MUL was put in place by Metro.
Okay, so they didn't go through, okay, so they didn't go through the process after Lakewood came into the...
Correct.
Okay. And then the other question for clarification, your conditions require them to not have any outside storage of tires and that they not have any display, outside displays of tires. Is that correct?
Correct. That's a recommendation.
Okay. So, okay. Thank you.
Judy? Hunter?
Could you put the zoning map up again? What's the zone just to the, oh, MUL. So it's MUL now. You know, you go through these nine specific items and really, none of them are doing anything. You know, I mean, they're all basically saying, you know, that they need to comply with MUL. And I guess the only limiting factor is the six tires or the four displays, which staff's addressed. But, you know, again, this, it just seems like a misuse of the tool and the intent of the SP tool. And, you know, I'm not going to support this.
Jeff?
No comment.
Derek?
Agreed. I'm not in support of this. And it's kind of like a situation whereby you kind of do it first and ask for forgiveness later. That's what I see in this situation. Therefore, I'm not in support of it.
Greg?
No comment.
Is there a motion?
I move we disapprove the applicant's request.
Second.
Motion second to disapprove applicant's request, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Is there anyone in the audience here for item number 10, which is the Waterford Assisted Item 10. Seeing none, this was originally on the consent agenda and was asked to be taken off, but that person has left. Is there a motion to put this back on consent?
So moved.
First.
Motion second.
Mr. Chairman, we get it.
I'm sorry. I was trying to get your attention, Mr. Chairman. Technically, we would have to, you would have to just go through the regular approval process and just, if you needed to skip the staff presentation, you could. But the consent agenda has already been approved and seconded and moved, so that's kind of where you...
Need a motion to open and close the public hearing?
Yes, sir.
And then a recommended approval?
Yes, sir.
We don't have to hear from staff?
No. No, sir.
Okay. Item...
I make, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we open the public hearing.
Is item, item 10 is open for public hearing. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor or anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, is a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion second to close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Is there any discussion or do I hear a motion?
Move we approve staff recommendations.
Motion to approve staff recommendations, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Susan has got her some, that's actually the way we should be doing these, so.
Thank you. We've just been putting them back on.
The staff's going to take a 10-minute break, and I believe the, there's three items left, item 15, 16, 17, all pertaining to Nashboro. So we'll be back in approximately 10 minutes. We're now ready for item number 15.
This is item 15 on your agenda. This is a request to amend Site 15 of the Nashboro Village PUD District, located at the southwest corner of Nashboro Boulevard and Plinlock Court, to add conditions to the approved neighborhood commercial uses. And staff is recommending disapproval as submitted, but approval with amendments. The current zoning is R-10 with a PUD overlay district, which permits neighborhood commercial uses. The proposed amendment would limit height, restrict uses, and create, include requirements that created a pedestrian-friendly environment. This is the approved site plan. In March 2012, the council member initiated review, excuse me, a review of the site. The planning commission recommended that Site 15 remain as approved, as it was consistent with the policy in place at that time. Further, it was recommended that as development of the site will require a revision to the PUD, staff were to work with the applicant to ensure the development, that the development provides neighborhood services at an appropriate scale and design that also contributes to the walkability of the area. In the recent update of the Antioch Priest Lake Community Plan, a special policy for this site incorporated the planning commission's recommendations. This is, the policy is now suburban neighborhood center. And with the special policy overlay, the building is restricted to one story. Any development is to encourage, encourages pedestrian-friendly streetscapes and connections, and one row of parking may be permitted in front of the building. While the proposed amendment is generally consistent with this policy, it does place restrictions on certain uses that would typically be found in a neighborhood center, and staff is recommending a number of changes to bring this proposal into compliance with the policy. A number of the uses proposed to be prohibited are uses appropriate for a neighborhood center. Staff is recommending that full-service restaurants, grocery stores, liquor stores, and general retail uses not be excluded. The zoning administrator has indicated that if a convenience drive-in market or a beer and cigarette market were included in the list of prohibited uses, it would be interpreted that all retail uses would be prohibited because neither of those uses are in the zoning The recommended change to condition four recognizes that the policy would permit one row of parking in front if it does not impact the pedestrian-friendly streetscape, and the recommended changes to condition six add clarity. There are no changes recommended to conditions two, three, and seven, but it should be noted that the building material requirements of condition seven may not be enforceable in a PUD. This is a review of the property, and staff recommends disapproval as submitted, but approval with recommended amendments.
Thank you. Item is open for public hearing. The applicant, if you'd like to come forward and make your case.
Good evening, Chair McLean and esteemed Commissioners, Secretary Bernhardt. Thank you all for being so patient. You work hard and we really appreciate the service that you all give to our city. In regards to Site 15, I'm asking that you please support the proposed legislation and not support the staff recommendation. And the reason being is because the items that were listed on the conditions list to be prohibited were, basically, they would come up with, they were placed in the legislation as a result of the developer and the steering committee coming up with those that were listed. And so I respectfully ask that you honor that because actually, those were items that the developer gave to the steering committee. And the steering committee and I met and we spoke in length about those items, and we feel it is appropriate to include them in the legislation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support?
My name is Roger Burnett. I have a unit in Woodridge, which is directly adjacent to the proposed property here. Couple of things that I've seen, I have a map here for you all, if I can give you this here.
Let's see. I'll pass it around for you.
It gives you a breakdown of all the apartments in Nashville, and you can see that Antioch has a disproportionate number of apartments in it.
Probably this site, you may believe it's the other.
You're on the commercial side.
Yeah. This item fifth, we're just taking one at a time. This doesn't pertain to the apartments.
I apologize. I'm sorry.
It's all right.
Okay.
If you'd like to make comments on this one, you're welcome to do that.
This is my first time here. I'm sorry. I goofed up a bit.
That's all right.
I'll come back when I know it's right. I apologize.
No, you're, you're, you're welcome here.
And I would like to ask legal or someone from your staff to clarify to everyone here because it is confusing to a lot of people, this process. When you have on the form to speak in favor of the proposal or not in favor of the proposal, can you explain what that means? You know, if they're speaking in favor of the proposals, that speaking in favor of the legislation or the staff recommendation?
I'm going to defer to the planning staff for that because I think that was a form that they may have prepared for individuals that would like to speak.
When you say you're in favor of the proposal, it's what is submitted, not the staff recommendation.
Okay.
Right. And you're probably right. We probably ought to clarify that in the future in favor of the application.
Exactly. Thank you.
Is anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Yes, sir. Mr. McClung?
No, Ken Renner with Bassland Companies. I am representing the partners and the owners of, and the investors in our property here in Nashboro Village.
You'd asked, this letter from Mr. McClung had asked for five minutes, so you'd be granted that much time.
Thank you, sir. I'll try to be as brief as possible. We're going to be as glad to have these issues disposed of finally, as you will be glad to have me not appearing before you quite as much anymore. We have, for the last five years, been trying to work out some compromises in this area regarding the use of these undeveloped properties that we bought in the Nashboro Village PUD. We tried to come to some agreements five years ago in a rezoning discussion. We were not able to come up with those and nothing happened at that time. Five months ago, six months ago, this issue was back before you again. We were being asked to declare whether we were active or inactive, and then you were asked to make a recommendation as to what should be done with this PUD. We supported the applicant at that time on the finding of the PUD being inactive, mostly because of the real estate recession. We weren't building much of anything anywhere, nor were most of the other developers in town. But we did concur that the PUD should be kept as it was, and we appreciated your support on that. During this latest round of discussions, we have worked with the applicant, Ms. Johnson. We have worked with the steering committee. We have worked with the homeowners association, with your excellent staff, and tried to reach some compromises that we felt would be appropriate during the recent Antioch Priest Lake Community Plan amendment process. There were some recommendations made that the PUDs be kept pretty much as they are, with some changes in case we came before you for PUD revisions, and we supported those. We have also supported, going beyond that in the spirit of compromise, and supported the fact, or made the offer, that we would take those restrictions currently. As you know, in the community plan, that only works prospectively if you're changing the plan, but we've offered to adopt those as the current standards as well. And I think there were some discussions with the community. Some were in favor of that, some were not, and that's why we are back before you today. Now, moving quickly to Site 15, Councilman Johnson is correct that we did agree with some of these uses, not all... some of these uses, not all of them. Specifically, we had some problems with the neighborhood market use being taken out, which is a very, very appropriate use for that area. We had a problem with the liquor restriction. We felt that the way it was worded, that it could restrict a restaurant that would serve beer or wine. So, we did, and we did agree to add back automobile convenience. It's not an appropriate location for a gas station in a residential area like that. So, we've tried to work with a compromise. Based on the way it stands now, though, the legislation would make it very, very difficult for us to develop and lease the kind of neighborhood center that is anticipated here. And for that reason, we would ask that you disapprove it. In the case that you decide not to, and that you decide to move forward, consider it, we would, in the spirit of compromise, once again, offer to accept the staff's recommendations, which we think are appropriate for this site. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
Commissioner, my name is David Coolman. I live on Flintlock Court, within about a quarter of a mile of the site, and have lived there about 10 years. I'm not sure, given the discussion a minute ago, whether I'm up here for or against a certain thing, so I just want to say as briefly as I can that, as a resident of the area, I'm opposed to any commercial development of this site. I think it's totally inappropriate. Might have been 30 years ago, when the PUD was first developed, is not now. All kinds of commercial development is within about a half a mile of this site. We don't need commercial development right in the middle of this residential area. Now, that having been said, and there's a traffic problem, those two things having been said, given what is proposed and what you all are considering, staff has taken out the reference to liquor store being prohibited in this development. I would encourage you to, in accordance with Council Lady Johnson's draft, to restore that. Liquor store, if commercial is allowed at all, liquor store is certainly not appropriate in this particular area. There's a liquor store within about a half a mile of this area, in the Kroger Shopping Center. That's a fine, appropriate place for it, not in the middle of this residential area. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak?
I'm Vivian Willhoyt. I live at 1029 Flintlock Court. And like the previous speaker, Mr. Dave Coolman, it's not that I'm for, the legislation's been submitted, and I'm definitely not in for with the owner of the property wanting to develop it. This neighborhood is a very unique neighborhood, probably one of the most unique part-type of neighborhood in Southeast Davison. I mean, you're so many, less than five miles from 40, 65, 24, close to the airport. You have the lake not too far away, Percy Priest, have an awesome golf course that we were able to save. And it's probably one of the most stable areas of all of Southeast Davison, one of the most. There are many other stable areas, but we believe that this brings a lot of great amenities that makes this area very unique. I'm not for anything going there, never have been, when this came up back five years ago. Reason why we couldn't get to it compromises is because the neighbors, and I still remain a neighbor and a resident of that area, still believe that there is nothing that needs to be there. When the review process was established, it was established for the planning commission to render a decision of what would be appropriate if the property is found inactive. The property is inactive. So now, you render a decision whether something would be appropriate there. I would advise you to really come out and take a look at this place physically. It is not appropriate for a liquor store, convenience store, or any store for that matter on that corner. So I'm asking that you look at taking away any type of development there and starting back all over again to allow the right type of smart development to happen in that area. And I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on the commercial side?
Thank you. Good evening. I'm the chairman and commissioner. My name is Howard Jackson, Jr. I own a property at 2426 Nashboro Boulevard. I moved, purchased that property in 2008. Also, I own a property at 1233 Charlton Drive. And I'm opposed to a commercial development on that corner also. I think it's uniquely residential, as the former council person said, but also, all my life, I've grown up in neighborhoods that have been full of liquor stores and bars and things like that. When I moved here, I moved here from the Virgin Islands. I originally was born in Cleveland. I was born in Cleveland at a time where segregated housing was still there, and I lived in some terrible properties with my parents coming up. One of the reasons I came to Nashville, because I can move anywhere in the United States of America. And one of the reasons I came here is because I came here in 2004. I saw Nashboro. I liked it. I thought it was unique to have the golf course there. I had never seen another African-American neighborhood in my life. But the thing I really liked about Nashboro was the integrated living, the way the people got along. And as the one gentleman said, "There's a liquor store at Kroger's." They sell liquor down by Anderson Road and things like that. Comptons, small business owners. You know, I support Comptons every chance I can get, you know? I don't need anything that's going to be in competition with them. That's about it. I wish I'd asked for more time, but I'm opposed to any commercial development on that corner. And if I had more time...
Thank you. In closing, as you can see, the preference on this parcel by many in the community for a long time has been for it to remain as is. And through months-long discussions, going back and forth with community meetings, a steering committee that had been formed at the request of the community, and working with the developer, all of those efforts resulted in compromises. And I think these are fair compromises. The list of conditions for the restrictions that would be placed on the property were developed in collaboration with the developer, and so therefore, I think they're reasonable. If you're familiar with this particular area, you know it sits in the very middle of the townhomes and apartments and single-family homes in the PUD. And so, it would not be the right thing to place convenience markets, liquor stores, things of that sort, in the heart of this community. So I ask again that you support the legislation that was very well thought out, that was developed with the collaboration of everybody working together, so that this can be a win-win for the community as well as the developer. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? It's a motion to close a public hearing on item 15. Motion second to close a public hearing, in favor? Any opposed? Greg.
I'll be asleep down there. I'm going to see what my fellow commissioners have to say, and then if you could roll back to me, that'd be great. Thank you, Chairman.
Well, this is an issue that's very near and dear to my heart. I see, you know, at least three sides here. The property owner who wants to develop the property. Secondly, you have a contingent of people who live there who don't necessarily want anything to occur there, and then you have a contingent that's willing to work with the property owner. And unfortunately, in this situation, somebody's going to walk away unhappy, either direct decision, any decision we make here tonight. And in the best of all worlds, it'd be great if we could make a decision that made everybody happy, but unfortunately, that will not necessarily be the case. But I guess the key thing that comes out to me, first and foremost, with this particular PUD, as it stands today, the property owner by right, what can the property owner do with the property at this point in time?
At this point, they have about 2,700, 1,000 square feet of commercial space. And what those commercials that can be included are, it's pretty general, because this was adopted under the old zoning code, and it just said that if commercial uses were permitted, then commercial uses could go there. And there's a long list of those in the zoning code now.
And would that long list include many of the items that they agreed that we have here on the staff's recommendations, including those items which staff has asked, recommended we remove?
The adult entertainment, a lot of that is restricted to the adult entertainment overlay. I'm not sure about flea market and auction houses, if those would be included. And there is some limited warehousing and storage that's permitted in commercial, and the other uses would be permitted, except for we don't have some of these uses listed in the code. In discussion with the zoning administrator, transit lodging would be, he would call that motel hotel. But a beer and cigarette market, grocery store, convenience drive-in, that's retail uses, and if those are excluded, then you may not be able to do any retail. We've also been looking at the liquor store standards, and this property wouldn't qualify for liquor store under the section, Title VII of the code. There are certain, it has to be on Arterio Street, it has to be in 10 acres of contiguous commercial land, it has to be in the USD, which it is, but that's the only criteria it meets, and it would have to meet all three. So, including it on the list, not including it on the list, it couldn't happen here under a different section of the code.
Okay. And I guess the thing is that concerns me, and I think several people pointed this out. First, there is a lot of commercial near here. I mean, a half a mile from this area that we're looking at. And obviously, I can sympathize with the individuals who don't necessarily want any development there, largely due to the fact that, within a half mile, which is, you know, walking distance, and it's a walkable area, you have a multitude of places, from a Kroger to a dental office, to restaurants, to a liquor store. But in the spirit of compromise, we don't want to do anything to really hurt the property's owner's rights to develop his property or her property in this particular situation or scenario. So I do think there needs to be a spirit of compromise at a minimum, but I don't necessarily believe that some of these commercial uses should be allowed, because they're just, they're there already. And that's just a personal opinion of mine. So if we do compromise, or if we recommend that there's a compromise here, I'm of the opinion that if we do go with this, that we accept it as submitted at a minimum. And that's just my recommendation right now, because again, this area, right where it is, it really doesn't need any commercial, because commercial's already there in walking distance. And I have some strong concerns there, but again, in fairness to the property owner, we've got to at least look at what options in terms of, in the spirit of compromise, are available, so that we don't take away his or her property rights to develop the property. So, that's just my thoughts, and I'd love to hear what others have to say.
Jeff?
I think we, as Nashville continues to densify thoughtful commercial development within residential areas, is going to be imperative. And I think it can work, and I think we need to allow the landowner to see what the market's going to bear. And so I'm going to support the staff recommendation with amendments.
Hunter?
I'm sorry. I'm just not sure I quite understand, because you said the current zoning, the current PUD allows 27,600 square feet of commercial uses.
That's right.
The proposed amendment allows 27,600 square feet of uses.
That's correct.
So the amendment is essentially limiting the uses...
That's the main condition, but it also is bringing, if you recall when we were looking at the six-year review of this property, you also recommended that any development be more pedestrian-oriented, and be brought to the street, have sidewalks, connections to the neighborhoods, buffering for the neighborhoods, and those are also included in this. The only concern that, or one of the major concerns with the changes that, as submitted, is that some of these uses that are being taken out, because we don't call them that specifically in the zoning code, it would be interpreted by the zoning administrator as meaning no retail would be permitted. So you couldn't have a drugstore there, you couldn't have a small convenience store, because those uses would be excluded.
And let me ask you a question. I don't mean to jump in, but is there a way to further define this?
I think that would take a text amendment to do that, because we simply don't separate them out this way. It's retail, and it's all-encompassing, retail.
Because one of the things, and I'm sorry, Hunter, that concerns me also on this, is the fact that when this PUD was passed, one of the things is that it was a different time and a different place. Times have changed, and one of the things that Antioch is facing in Nashboro Village is that when this PUD was passed, it was just a lot of open green space. The density has increased exponentially over the years since this was passed, and we've just got to make sure that as we approach this and make a determination on this, that we take a lot of this into consideration. Density can be a good thing, but not in all cases, and we have to take that into consideration.
Yes, I'm confused, because we're not changing density.
No.
No.
No, not changing density, but just restricting some of the...
Restricting uses is all we're doing here.
Yeah. Restricting uses and adding certain conditions for when the property is developed.
Okay. So, under the applicant's recommendation, or the applicant's conditions there, what uses would be allowed on this site, according to the zoning administrator?
I haven't got the comprehensive list, but it wouldn't allow retail. It would allow a restaurant, but not with a bar as part of it, not, it could be interpreted that it couldn't serve beer, wine, or liquor, but it might be able to do that, a restaurant. You could have fast food restaurants, you could have services, dry cleaner, that kind of services. You could have hair cutting, nail salons, those types of things.
Okay. Okay. Does the property owner claim that the change is from a two-s... I guess I'm reading the letter here, and I didn't get to read the whole thing, but from two-six-story buildings, she's asking...
That's the next case.
With the gap. Okay. That's all I've got. Thanks.
Yeah. I don't know where to begin, except, on the picture, can you just show the...
Do you want the aerial?
Well, yeah, the aerial.
Okay.
Go back.
I have a, there.
Yeah, okay. So, this is all residential right around here.
That's correct. This is the commercial component of the planned unit development.
And we thought that that was a good idea, that.
Yes. And you confirmed that twice. There was an attempt to cancel this portion of the PUD, I think in 2008, '07 or '08, and also, when you did the six-year review, you recommended it stay as it is, because it was an appropriate location for a small retail pocket in this larger residential area, as part of the master planned community.
It just doesn't look like it fits to me today, and I just wonder if I was at those meetings, but...
I was using the collective view.
Yeah. And which way is the nearest commercial?
This is Nashboro Boulevard, and it would be out here towards Murfreesboro. I can make a... I can make a, go back to that larger aerial.
Yeah.
Yeah, Murfreesboro. This is the commercial
And so in between there, there are all these homes and
It's, there's a lot of elevation. There's a golf course that comes up to the street. This property, we will be discussing later, is proposed for daycare, or is approved for daycare. And there's still a lot of open space. There was the big house, the original house, there's a neighborhood landmark on it that is on this property. And then these properties, you may remember, those are under construction now, they're townhouse units, but they go up a hill, so they, they look well over the, this commercial. It's, it starts to go up, this part here is relatively flat, portion of it, and then it starts to go, elevation rises all around it as you go out.
So people would potentially be living right across the street from a restaurant, a barbershop, a food shop?
That's right, correct. It would be this undeveloped lot, parcel here.
And I'm just trying to picture what that would look like, and so I'm thinking lighting, traffic, I'm thinking just all those kinds of things.
And all those things
Is it a strip mall? I mean, I'm trying
Actually, with some of the designs that, when, when we were looking at the six-year review, you recommended that any future development of this property be done in a pedestrian scaled way, and address the street, and connect to the neighborhoods so it's easy walking. And some of the changes that the council lady is including, or the amendments including in her proposal, take those, those very things that you recommended and put it into the requirements now, not, not when it comes for review, for revision. And those are ones that the staff supports, and they're part of the policy as well.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Counselor?
Okay, so the neighborhood center is in the community plan?
That's correct. In the, the most recent update, is now a suburban neighborhood center.
Okay. Mr. Bernhardt, did you pull the list of uses there? Did I see you going through that? Would you read to us what's allowed there presently?
I assume that they would, they're interpreting this as retail, right?
Yeah.
Let me go through that then.
Well, it'd be commercial, I think, uses.
Yeah, the commercial uses that currently, I would assume would be allowed, would be, because it just says "commercial." So that would include animal boarding facility, ATM, animal, automobile convenience, automobile parking, repair, automobile sales, service, bar, nightclub, bed and breakfast, business service, carpet cleaning, car wash, community gardening, funeral home, furniture store, home improvement sales, hotel, inventory, stock, kennels, laundries, liquor sales, plants repair, pawn shops, personal care, restaurants, all types of restaurants, retail, vehicular sales, and wrecker service. That's the broad list. What she's trying to do under this amendment is to eliminate some of those uses.
Right. Okay, so if we take, if we were to move forward with the council lady's request to strike some of these things out, then basically, all the retail component of what he just read would not be allowed.
That's correct. All the general retail would, that the zoning administrator has indicated he would interpret that to mean that no retail would be permitted in this.
So we would in essence then be limiting to service-oriented
That's correct.
Businesses.
That's correct.
And
And what?
And I mean, drive-through restaurants could go there.
And that a, a drive-through restaurant, is that a retail or a service?
That's a restaurant. It's a separate category.
Okay, would restaurants be allowed then?
Restaurants would be allowed, but bars and nightclubs wouldn't be allowed under this scenario.
You know, we're, this is like a rock and a hard spot. Because if you do one, then you, you trigger something. On the other side, it's not necessarily wanted, but if you don't do the, the one, then you trigger something else. I don't know. This is really difficult. I'm having a, I understand the, and I'm sympathetic to the owner's right to develop the property. And for those of you that spoke that said, "We don't want anything there," that is a lofty goal, but not a realistic goal. I mean, you know, we can't say to a property owner, "You can't develop property that you bought for that purpose." So then you begin to look at, okay, what is the, the most acceptable use that we could apply to this? So we've said in, by documents that this body has approved, and has been approved by council, that this area is appropriate for a neighborhood center.
That's correct.
So if we don't allow any development there, commercial development, then we are in essence violating our own policy. So I, to me, it makes sense, if there is sense in this, that the council lady's proposal would allow for some degree of commercial development here, but would just strip out the retail portion of it. And if that's, to me, that may be the, the closest way to get to a, I don't, I don't know.
I think the applicant, or the owner of the property stated earlier, and the council lady agreed, that they had met with the steering committee, and they had agreed on what was appropriate. So I'd like to hear what those are, and see if they, both sides are in agreement as to what those are and adopt those.
Mr. Chair.
Craig?
Thank you for letting me go last. After listening to everybody. And, and everybody's brought up really good, good thoughts, and I appreciate the neighbors coming out, and I recognize several of y'all from several meetings coming by. It seems definite that, that the current commercial uses seem way, way too extreme. I mean, that, I think everybody, it seems that way. But, you know, when I think of, of, of commercial uses, or proper commercial uses, I go, or retail uses, using all those terms loosely, I think of areas that part of the commercial use makes sense. Like, I can think of several, just off the top of my head, like Germantown in Nashville. There's very appropriate commercial uses there, that are right next door to residents. You know, there's, I can think of Sylvan Park, where there's very, very appropriate uses, and there's residential all around the area. And as a matter of fact, it makes the area more, it makes it more appropriate, and it makes you want to live there because those things like Star Bagel are there, you can go there and get your bagel and coffee. I can think of, you know, where there's very appropriate areas that serve, serve liquor, I'm not talking about a liquor store. Well, yeah, it includes a liquor store, I guess, which would be 12th South, you know, and there's residents that is right next door to it. Now, excluding the liquor, we have already heard the liquor can't be there. So that, that makes it better, I think, for me personally, and I think for the neighbors. But I envision, and it seems like the areas that I named off seem like appropriate things for y'all's neighborhood. Now, I don't live in, in your neighborhood. Frequent the neighborhoods several times, because I do like to play golf over there. So it seems to me that, with that said, that that is what the staff recommendations do, is that they try to, you know, and I'm not envisioning, I think an inappropriate use would be a fast food restaurant there. I just think that, that would not be something that is, is appropriate. I mean, I've been on that street many times. But in, in saying all that, though, I do think that there are appropriate uses that make sense and could make your area, that, that you would all enjoy, and it'd be there. And I know it's a sticky wicket at this point, but at this point, for me personally, I think that the staff recommendations make the most sense, given the situation. And I think that it would be harmful to not allow some types of retail to be there. And I think it would almost be illegal in some, if it was challenged maybe in court, quite frankly. So that's my opinion. I know I've probably upset everyone, but tonight's been a sticky wicket, altogether.
Other comments?
You were asking Chairman to hear from
Yeah, if there's been a compromise of what would be appropriate, what would be eliminated, I'd like for both parties to, if you're in agreement, tell us what those are.
Commissioners? Is it all? Okay. Commissioners, I tell you, this has not been developed and been taken lightly in the development of what you see as restrictions on this property. This has been a very, very long process.
I understand that. If you would, tell us what those items are. You know, we understand that motions and
We, we agree, no liquor store should be in the heart of this area, next to the golf course as well, and these homes. We agree that there should not be a drive-up cigarette and beer market, because that's kind of almost similar to the liquor aspect. It's just not appropriate for this particular location. I understand what you're saying, Commissioner Atkins, but those particular communities, like Germantown and others, were kind of built around existing commercial businesses. This community and PUD was not. And in fact, when they moved the White House, that used to sit actually off of Murfreesboro at the corner of this PUD, and, and, and put in the Kroger and that shopping plaza there, it dramatically changed the entire PUD, and that was not a part of the original intent when the PUD was developed in the 70s. So I mean, I'm, I just think this is a very good compromise, given how the PUD has ultimately developed. And this would keep the integrity and the character of that area intact, but at the same time, allow the, the developer to still be able to not have their property rights taken away totally from that, that parcel. So, no, we don't want another grocery store because we've got Krogers. We don't want another convenience drive-in market, or anything with the liquor aspect to it. And we feel that this is a compromise, and I would hope that Mr. Renner and Vassland would agree.
Are you saying that the items that you see on here, the adult entertainment, pawn shop, flea market
I believe those were actually on the original document. I can email that. Do you have the original document?
We're trying to settle this tonight, so you won't be able to email it to us, but the items
Well, the original, the original document came from Vassland.
I don't have, I've never had that document.
Well, I, I emailed it to you when we added the conditions to the, to the legislation. So that was submitted to you and John Cooper.
Well, can you look at the screen?
Chairman, let me just try to, try to clarify one thing. Part of the dilemma of this is that there are a lot of terms in here that are not terms that are used in the zoning code, and therefore aren't, aren't defined. The term beer and cigarette market is not a term that's used in the zoning code. If, and so if the zoning administrator says the only way he can interpret that is to interpret that as meaning retail, therefore no retail. Because that's not there. Convenience drive-in market. I'm not sure I know what that is, but that's not a defined term in there. A grocery store is not, I mean, it's either a retail use or not. So if you want to delete retail, it should say retail. I mean, you need to be using the terms that are, that are in the zoning code, and that would clarify a whole lot of things, and it would clarify our understanding, what the applicant can do and not. Otherwise, you're still leaving things up in the air. That's part of the problem.
But how do we solve that?
Well, if that would encompass these items, yes, we would like to delete that, that use, totally.
Okay, just, just a minute, just a minute. How can we solve this tonight, so this doesn't come back before, six months from now, and a year from now, two years from now, that we can
Well, I believe that items I, J, and K, you could delete those from her list and simply write in retail.
We're looking at the screens. Tell us what I, J, and K is.
Beer, the last three are all encompassed in the term retail. I'd have to check, go on up and check and see if the others are. But those, if you substituted retail for all three, that gets that, let's see. You can leave liquor store in there because it's not permitted anyway, but that's not liquor sales, would be the right term, liquor sales.
Chairman? Directly to answer your question, the first five items on the list were the ones that we agreed to. Subsequently, we agreed to add auto convenience, because we've recognized that it's not an appropriate place for a gas station. What we would object to is eliminating retail use, because without any retail uses, you're not going to be able to put any kind of center there whatsoever. If you limit it solely to personal services, by the time you put a nail salon, a hairstylist, a barber, and a dry cleaner, you're out of luck. And that won't take 27,000 square feet. You're going to need other kinds of retail there. You know, a game store, or a small market where you can go in and buy, you know, groceries or, you know, various things. But there are going to be other needs, are going to need to be other uses to fill 27,000 square feet. Personal services won't do it.
Is it possible that we could, and I, thank you for that clarification, limit drive-in for that kind of use? I think that might be
The liquor aspect is very important.
Well, the liquor's out, all right.
Okay.
But it, could we limit, I guess is a question, limit, what? Drive-in.
Drive-in what? I mean
You can limit, there's drive-in restaurants, or fast food restaurants would be the term.
And it would be drive-through.
Convenience stores, grocery stores, all of those are retail services.
Or just drive-through? Could we limit drive-through?
Does automobile conveniences, is that what we normally consider a drive-in market?
Yeah, that would be your part, your
Your mini
Thorntons, for example.
Right. Okay, so that takes, that basically eliminates the convenience drive-in market.
Right, right. Automobile convenience is a term, it's a term
Right. But that includes what that drive-in market would be.
Bottom line.
Bottom line, yeah.
Okay, so we struck out liquor store, and we, we've struck out convenience drive-in market.
Yeah, I, the first, on your screen, the first, all those that, before liquor store are terms that are in the code and are defined. Liquor store, you could leave that because it's not allowed anyway. The term, proper term for the next would be bar or nightclub, period. That's covered, that's a term that's there. And then the last three are either, the last three are all covered in retail. So you could, if you substitute retail for the last three. And that gets you all terms that are, I'm not suggesting that, it just gets you terms that are defined, right?
If you put retail in there, doesn't that eliminate more than just these three items?
Oh, yes. It eliminates a whole lot more, right?
Y'all want to
Right.
All, all retail.
So what's the difference, what's the difference between, I know we don't define beer and cigarette market versus automobile convenience? Is it just the, the gas pumps?
It goes to battle?
So there's a, it's a beer and tobacco store that doesn't sell gas, that wouldn't
We don't want that at all.
But it, but it doesn't technically fall under our definition of automobile convenience because it doesn't
Yeah, but it would be allowed. And once they dispose of the property, then there's nothing we can do to prevent that. So once it is sold to someone, and they are able to have that particular use on this property, there's no stopping, Vassland won't be there. It'll be the person that they sell it to. So they're going to do whatever they want to do, and it doesn't matter what the community says. So the legislation protects the integrity of the community, and it's so very important because this is literally within the heart of Nashville Village and the community. And we really, you have to live there to know. It's just like what Commissioner Dalton said, if you lived in this area It's just like what Commissioner Dalton said, if you lived in this area, you would understand that it is not appropriate for this particular location. So I'm not restricting all of the uses that fall under commercial, which I think that's important. But we're only restricting a few of the uses. If we don't want retail in the community, and that is something that the community has expressed overwhelmingly, and that's going to impact their quality of life, I think that's important. And so I'm just asking, please include retail because it's just not an appropriate use for this parcel.
All retail.
All retail for this parcel.
And that's where I completely disagree with the councilwoman. I think there are retail uses that can work, and I think the market will bear it out.
Well, if that's the case, I'm going only by what Secretary Bernhardt has suggested. We didn't say all retail. We are happy with a portion of the retail being restricted, which has been listed.
The three.
So we don't, we're not necessarily saying that we want all retail to be restricted. That, I was just going off the fact that he's saying it has to be done that way.
So retail that falls within these bottom three.
Right.
However, it's described in the code.
Exactly.
He's described as retail, that's the problem.
So it's lumped together.
They're all together, right.
The only way to really get at what is trying to be accomplished here on both sides would be to do an SP for this property.
Now, even there, you would go back to the uses of the code. I mean, the SP that we use are the defined uses of the code, yeah. I mean, I don't.
So you can't?
I mean, text. Well, you would have to define them. I, you know, I'm not sure, to be honest, I'm not sure what a beer and cigarette market is. Every grocery store that I've ever been in sell beer and cigarettes, and I don't know that I've been in one that just sells beer and cigarettes.
What about the one that just sells tobacco? The tobacco markets that you see everywhere? How is that listed in our code?
It's retail.
And does it have a name? It doesn't have a name?
Retail.
Okay.
But to break out some aspects of that retail in the legislation, I think it's appropriate.
Let me share this example with you. We have had before this body areas that did not want the check cashing.
Right.
Is that just, is that retail or is that check cash?
No, there was a definition developed and put in the code that defines those. I mean, there's, I don't want to over, there are issues that remain with that definition, but the definite, the issue was defined and put in the code.
So you're saying that there would actually have to be another designation written into the list to define what tobacco alcohol store is? Then you could take it out.
Right, yeah, yeah. If you define it, you could take it out.
But it's still subject to interpretation by the zoning administrator, so I'm just.
Not if it was, not if you created a designation to that extent, it would, that would be specific to that.
Right, right, correct.
Whatever way we can get there, we've compromised up to this point, you are, and this is important to the community.
And how do we get there? That's the question.
How do we get there? We're relying on you. Because this is important to our community. It will destroy the community if this type of retail use is allowed. So we need your help.
Okay. Hunter?
Well, I mean, the answer is a text amendment, which we can't do. So we either need to just defer this and let the council member try to address it otherwise. But, I mean, to me, I think the risk is low. Most of these beer and cigarette shops.
They're not going to go there. Yes, they would. They're not going to go there.
Well, the rents that would, a new building would require.
Go ahead and then.
I mean, I believe, and I may be wrong, but I believe that the rents that a brand-new building, there's no building there now, right? A brand-new building would require, would likely take them out. Now, do we know that, I mean, I don't know, there was suggestion that Vassland is going to sell the property. And I don't know if that's their plan or not necessarily.
We have no plans of that.
Right. So, you know, I'm not sure the risk is that great. I think there's.
It is great if you live there. It really is.
If the commissioners would state your feelings, but I want to, you know, we try to keep the motions out. I understand where they're coming from, but yet we've got a job that we've got to do that take the motions out of it. And I don't know that we can reach that tonight, but I'd like to hear the discussion from the commissioners so we can decide up or down and move on because we've got two other items that probably going to take longer than this one is.
So we have to decide up or down? We can't defer and ask them to work with the text amendments and?
You can defer. They, I mean, there has to be a recommendation from the commission to file the application. The council lady could have the rules waived at the council before that to file it, but yeah.
This could be deferred to your next meeting. There is council bill for all three of these items that are moving to first reading next week.
The council lady could.
I think it's still be updated after first reading.
Yeah.
The difficulty is that you would have no recommendation when it went to second reading because the second reading occurs on December 4th, and your next meeting is not until December 13th.
And I can notice.
Yeah, that was my question.
I can notice and follow my.
Well, if that's the case, I'd like to move for a deferral.
Now, we're, we'll get a second. When we defer, what are we asking for?
Basically to give, if we go ahead and move for a deferral, it will basically give the council lady an opportunity to develop a plan, possibly a change in, to further define what these convenience stores, beer, cigarette markets are and things of that nature. Allow her an opportunity to work that out. That's the reason why I would like to defer it, to give her an opportunity to look at what her options are and to further define beer and cigarette markets.
Okay, for a second to that motion, kind of motion second to defer, Hunter?
I just have one question for staff. Has there been a recent or any time in history that you know of, an attempt to take out liquor and cigarette? I'm sorry, I need to make sure they're listening. Yeah, I just had a question for staff, whether there has been any attempt in the past that you're aware of to eliminate, to separate either alcohol sales or tobacco sales from retail?
Liquor store, liquor sales is a separate classification. I'm not aware of any instance of trying to separate out, in effect, beer, beer is what you're talking about because liquor and wine are all controlled. So this is only beer.
And cigarettes.
Cigarettes, I'm not aware of anything that separated those out. I mean, you know, I'm more interested in trying to investigate this. I'm really familiar with cigar stores and up in cigarette stores. I'm not interested in understanding what a tobacco store is. I understand a lot of convenience stores.
Oh, if you go into some of the poor neighborhoods and you'll see the tobacco stores everywhere.
Yeah, but I think they're typically convenience stores is what they typically are.
With that deferral, well, let me ask you, that give her an opportunity to, and staff as well, to do further research on this issue because apparently there are some, everyone's here talking, trying to figure out what our options are. And I mean, I'm not sure we even understand what the options are as a, as a commission. So, I mean, I think this requires further study. And if I, if I was asked to vote right now, you know, I would vote to put retail in there and take everything out. And I want to make sure that we have all the information ahead of us so we can make an informed decision.
Right.
Okay, we've got a motion second to defer, how long?
I'm sorry?
I mean, we need to defer until we define these issues. I mean, it could be next month, I guess, yeah. If we can get clarification as to what they are and an illustration of a store to go see that is one.
Yes.
That is just a tobacco store.
To the one that sells marijuana.
Well, that's a different issue.
But they sell artificial stuff.
You can come to Donaldson. I have a, it's not a drive-in, it's not a convenience store, it's not a gas pump, it strictly sells alcohol and tobacco. So you can come out there and check it out, be glad.
If a text amendment is required, that would take about two or three months.
We just defer.
Well, that could catch up, I mean, that could be done. We've got to verify that you can even regulate uses in a PUD. I'm not sure you can regulate uses in a PUD. That's a whole different issue.
We just defer indefinitely. There's a motion second on the floor to defer item number 15 indefinitely, all in favor, aye? Any opposed? Item 15 is deferred, and now read for item 16.
Okay, this next item is item 16. And did you want to talk about this before I get into it?
Yeah. You need to introduce it, and then I will.
Okay. This is a request to amend site 14 of the Nashboro Village PUD located at the southeast corner of Nashboro Boulevard and Flintlock Court.
This issue, this application was filed as an incomplete application. Staff accepted the application because of the extraordinary circumstances of being filed through the council. If you'll show up here what the, basically, a typical complete application in accordance with your rules would include a letter indicating water and sewer availability for metro water services or a waiver of that, and it would, it would require a PUD checklist and go through that. It would include these items specifically in there. These items weren't included. The planning commission, however, you do have, under your rules, the ability to interpret and make exceptions to these rules for extraordinary cases that you would need to put forward. So you can hear this item. If you find that this is an extraordinary case, we would suggest that it may very well be as it was filed by the council lady in this case. Now, you other, your choices are, the commission decides to waive its rules, you find it being an extraordinary case. If you do that, then you then rule on the case on its merits. Either it's approved on its merits as a recommendation, or it's disapproved or approved with conditions. Or if you decide not to waive your rules, then you would simply, as a matter of course, disapprove this on the grounds that it didn't meet the requirements for an application. So you just need to be, you need to decide whether you wish to waive the rules first, and if so, then we will go ahead and present the case.
Can you go back and show what the items that were incomplete? So none of these were sent in?
No, uh-uh. I mean, the case itself deals with just changing some of the standards, but none of these issues which are part of the checklist were included.
I don't have a corn.
He went to the bathroom.
We took a short recess, we're not leaving, we just don't have a corn right now.
Why are all of these things required with this item, or were they required with the previous item amendment?
It's because of the difference in what the item amends. The other item simply amended certain parts. I mean, we can go through the case, but this is a case that fundamentally affects the site plan and the layout of it. The other one didn't.
And normally would staff notify the applicant that it was incomplete?
Yes.
And was that done?
It was not done until earlier this week, I think, so, yeah.
It's not done yesterday. That is never told me. Never, never communicated. I've done everything like clockwork.
The issue really didn't come up until it was challenged by the property owner who raised the question of whether they were in conformance. And we checked it out, and when we did, we notified the, we notified the applicant.
There was no site plan submitted for periodic review.
Okay. Counselor?
Question is, would we waive the rules?
I'm not sure I know how to, a question to ask at this point. I'm kind of confused, Chair. I mean, the staff feels like there's circumstances that warrant waiving the rules. I mean, and I think that, but staff can't do that in this case, you have to do that. And I think it's an extraordinary case in terms of being, it's coming as a result ultimately, or originally, it's coming as a result of a six-year review and a recommendation to the council, and then the council's response to that recommendation. That's the extraordinary component from our part. It's not being done outside of that. And we think that's a reasonable, I think it's a reasonable extraordinary case. The commission may decide otherwise, but I think that was, and that was why we accepted it the way it was.
There's a motion to waive the rules.
For a moment, second.
Motion second to waive the rules, all in favor, aye? Any opposed? Okay.
And that was based on the extraordinary circumstance that I stated?
Yes. I think that's part of the case here.
All right, then your job is to then just review this on its merits, up or down or whatever you want to do.
This is a request to amend, this is a request to amend site 14 of the Nashboro Village PUD located at the southeast corner of Nashboro Boulevard and Flintlock Court, and staff recommends disapproval if submitted and approval with amendments. The current zoning, which is R10 with a PUD overlay, permits 144 multifamily units in two six-story buildings. The proposed amendment would permit assisted independent living and townhome style of multifamily limited to two stories in height. This is the approved site plan. In March 2012, the council member initiated a PUD review of this site. The planning commission recommended that site 14 remain as approved for 140 multifamily units in two six-story buildings, as this was consistent with the residential median policy in place at that time. In addition, the taller buildings were viewed as appropriate in this prominent location of the PUD. And since that time, the policy has been updated to suburban neighborhood maintenance and natural conservation, as there's a stream running across the northern part of the property, and with a special policy overlay, which notes that the appropriate uses for this property include assisted living and multifamily, that the development needs to be in character with the overall PUD. A development should be up to four stories in height, and parking should be located beside or behind the building. Alternatively, if this property is secured for public open space, an open space policy is on top of this as well. This is a view of the property. The property sits approximately 20 feet lower than the adjacent development across Nashboro Boulevard and across the pond and golf course. There is a range of housing types in the PUD, stacked flats, townhouses, and single-family. The special policy recently adopted by the planning commission permits up to four stories for a building and requires that the development be in character with the overall development of Nashboro Village. Staff is recommending a number of changes that would bring the proposed amendment into compliance with the policy. First is to delete the reference to a two-story height limit and replace with a four-story height limit. A four-story building on this property would fit into the character of the PUD and would meet the building form requirements of the policy. The second is to delete the reference to townhouse. This restriction would be difficult to meet as the zoning code does not have a development type called townhouses. Any attached unit three or more is just identified as multifamily. And delete the requirement that development be consistent with the scale of development along the southeast side of Nashboro Boulevard. The policy requires this site to be consistent with the overall character of the PUD, not just one portion. This is the view of the property looking towards the lake, and staff recommends disapproval as submitted, but approval with staff-recommended amendments.
Thank you. This item is open for public hearing. The advocate will be allowed 10 minutes to make his presentation.
I want to give each of you a copy of what I'm going to be saying today. That's a market analysis.
Just give me all of them, I'll pass them down.
Okay. Okay, again, I am speaking on site 14, which is item 16 on the agenda. And I'm asking that you support the legislation as submitted and do not support the staff As the councilperson for District 29, I have been involved with these parcels since March of this year, when I requested a periodic review to utilize the new legislation passed by the Metro Council in 2007. A steering committee for Nashville was formed at the request of my constituents from a community meeting that I held on May 2, 2012, at the Nashville Golf Course Grill. On May 9, an email was sent to the community announcing the leaders, many who are presidents of the various neighborhood associations in the Nashville PUD, and to include a Realtor in District 29, as well as an outside attorney and former council member. The first steering committee meeting was held on May 14, and the committee had its first meeting to discuss all undeveloped parcels in Nashville on May 21, 2012. A letter was drafted and sent to Vassland after this meeting on June 1, asking if they could develop the Site 14 Pond property in a manner consistent with the adjacent properties. No detailed plans were requested, simply a description of how they envisioned the property being developed in the near future. The letter did state the preference of the community was that the land remained undeveloped. Vassland responded with a letter dated June 14, 2012, stating they developed approximately 750 dwelling units within the Nashville PUD, all are two-story townhomes. The steering committee then again reconvened on June 20, 2012, to discuss the letter and options. On July 10, 2012, I sent a letter explaining that Vassland provided no options to the steering committee, and that I met with constituents who asked, could the property be amended to residential townhomes or an assisted living facility with design criteria? Vassland responded with a letter, July 18, explaining that they had a substantial investment in the property and felt they could bring value to the planned Nashville community, and agreed to meet with the steering committee for Nashville. A meeting was scheduled and took place with Vassland and the steering committee for Nashville on July 26, 2012, at the Metro Council Office Conference Room. It was agreed that they would come up with some draft restrictions that could be applied with the legislation for their property. The number of stories was still an area of contention. The steering committee for Nashville received the proposed restrictions on August 8, 2012. Discussions among the steering committee took place, and another meeting was scheduled with Vassland to tour a rehabilitative senior center, proposed assisted living center called the Life Center at Hickory Woods, further down Murphysboro Road. The goal was to see if discussions could be moved away from the townhome option to an independent senior living type option, so that hopefully Vassland would move in this direction with development as the preferred option for Site 14 Pond property. Between September 7 and September 25, 2012, legislation was drafted incorporating the conditions, which are called the CCRs, and was submitted to the steering committee and the Metro Council Office sent this to Vassland for their review. Vassland responded with concerns about not having the height at four stories. I responded that based on the information shared, all discussions with Vassland, the community, and the steering committee, that two stories as the height, should townhomes be the option that they would look to build, that the consensus was that the two-story option would be the best interest, would be in the best interest of the community and Vassland. I received an email, October 10, 2012, from Planning with property owner comments on the conditions that you have before you today. A meeting of the steering committee immediately took place. Answers were provided to Vassland and Planning on October 11, 2012. Changes were made to the draft legislation based on Vassland's response and the steering committee's input. It was at this time Vassland shared by phone that they had a buyer who wanted to build three-story market-rate apartments and what they felt their land was worth and valued at. I subsequently sent an email to Vassland on October 19, asking if they could share a redacted copy of the offer Mr. Renner shared that they had for a three-story 96-unit apartment complex. Vassland responded on that they could not share this information. A meeting was then scheduled for October 26, 2012, with me and the Metro Council's office assistant, Roseanne Hayes. The discussions were around options around the height. Mr. Renner shared that I should come up with some type of offer, because at this point, they just wanted to get rid of the land. A community meeting was held on October 30, 2012, to share all of the information discussed by me, the steering committee, and Vassland to include the proposed legislation before you today. A letter was sent the same day and shared with the community, asking Vassland if they would consider an offer to sell for $300,000, working with the Land Trust of Tennessee and Metro Parks and Recreation. Vassland responded on November 2, 2012, rejecting the offer per their statement that it was only a small fraction of the market value as evidenced by the offer supposedly on the table from a buyer willing to purchase it at a substantially higher value. Immediately, a response from me was sent on November 2, 2012, with another offer, this time incorporating an option for the community to give towards another $300,000 to be arranged with the Land Trust of Tennessee for donations, making the proposed offer to keep this area and the community green spaces $600,000. Vassland again rejected this on November 6, stating this was only a fraction of the amount of the supposed contract offer pending at fair market value. The reason I share all this information as part of the record is that as a council member, I have worked tremendously hard in working with all parties to reach a compromise that it is in the long-term best interest of the citizens in our city and the landowner developer who do not have vested rights, as was confirmed through the periodic review process. In doing extensive research on this area, I learned that the market growth for this particular market area is negative 21, and there are currently 4,000 rental housing units in this area. I have passed out to you a market analysis that shows the land price analysis for the property in question today, the property that Metro Parks purchased off of Smith Springs Road, which is comparable to their parcel, the parcel that Vassland foreclosed on, which is less than a quarter of a mile from this property, and what Vassland says their property is worth. Enclosing the community should be able to actually acquire the land by acquisition through adverse possession. No complaints have been made by Vassland to people openly using this land as a park. This has been used by a measure of law and statutes around these laws for 20 years. Site 14, over time, has become a park. By Vassland placing park tables, benches, and grills on this site, they in a sense made Site 14 a de facto park. The community has seen this as a park, and the city should be allowed to buy Site 14 as a park, and a sub-area plan has been approved in October 2012 with a park policy on this parcel reflecting this very fact. I see that I probably will run out of time to read the rest of this, so it is a part of the record as submitted to you this evening, and I'll be available to answer any questions. I again renew my request to ask you to please support the legislation after all of the hard work that has gone into developing this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak and favor the application? Seeing none, well, if you would, the commissioners, you know, would like to get home too sometime tonight, so anybody wishing to speak, come get in line, and you'll be allowed two minutes. Line up behind the speaker now.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman McLean, and again, the Honor Board, Planning Commission members. Once again, I'm Vivian Will Hoyt. I live at 1029 Flintlock Court, which is just at the other opposite end of where the proposed property that we're looking at today. With all the information that has gone into it, that's quite a bit of information and something you should take in consideration. But I just want to say, just as a resident of the District 29, former council member, here we are again in 2005, from 2005, here we're again looking at this proposed property. As you said earlier about the site 15, you don't want to have this to come before you again, so it is very, it would be very, it would be in the best interest of the community and the planning commission that you do come forth and make a decision about this property. Many of us did not want anything built on Site 14, and justifiably so. Still, that remains true for me. Our neighborhood is greatly different from what it was 40 years ago, and it was less dense at that time. The review process, substitute ordinance 2007 1367, passed during my council term, was designed for the planning commission to recommend an appropriate development for the area in question. Respectfully, I say to you, there is nothing appropriate about six stories, four stories, three stories, or any stories for Site 14 by the lake. What prevented Vassland from building was that the market did not call for apartment development. Vassland offered to change the property from six to four back in 2005. They could have done that at any time, but they chose not to. If the market had called for Vassland to build six, four, or three stories, by now they would have already done so. So it is time that you must reduce the property density on that property. Nothing stopped them from doing any type of reduction, and at this time, we should be considering the reduction of the density of that property, no doubt about it. Many of us believe, and I still believe, that due to the tremendous change, the increased amount of apartments, especially vacant, during this time, there are vacant apartments sitting around, as you heard some of the details provided by the councilwoman prior. The vacancy already there in that area is not calling for any type of apartment. So with that being said, please consider reducing the density on this property. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is David Coolman, again, living on Flintlock Court within about a quarter of a mile of this site. I just want to make a statement again about the density of the development in Nashville Village. Last revised plan on the Nashville Village project, the PUD, was to allow for 2,507 living units. Of that number, 1,557 apartment units were approved. There were 1,413 of those approved on the north side of Nashville Boulevard. Most, I think all, of those have been built. We have over 1,400 apartment units already there. We don't need any more apartment units for any size building, two, three, four, six-story. It doesn't matter, we don't need them. There are no buildings on the south side of Nashville Boulevard where this site is, taller than about two stories, with the exception of several houses that are on steeply sloped lots, single-family detached houses. There are no, there are no buildings like these that are proposed. And so I would certainly urge you and recommend no approvals for anything that involves more apartment units, certainly anything taller than two stories. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sam Neal, and I live at the Nashville Greens within the community, 200 Nashville Greens Court. And what I would like for you to consider is that this property that we're talking about right now is directly adjacent to the property that was so confusing to decide on a few minutes ago. It's right across the street from it. And what I want you to consider is, if you put commercial space on one side and also develop apartments on this side, it's kind of as if you're making a joint decision, because one side of the land is commercial, the other side could be considered for apartments. And we're talking about density right now. That is going to create a problem in the Nashville Village area because of the Nashville Boulevard that goes through there. There is going to be a lot of people crossing the street. There's not provisions for any stop signs or anything like that, so I would like for you to consider that, but also, the legislation removed the term townhome, because there is not a definition for townhome. So right now, we're left with apartments going there, multifamily units. And as you heard earlier, there's too many apartments there right now. This is a park space. It's right next to the golf course. You can even see in the pictures where the geese are there. People go and they feed them. They take their kids there. They have fun, and it's an open space as far as the community is concerned, and to have apartments, high-rise apartments there, it's just not suitable. Vassland has run out of time. People have developed around this land, and because of that, they have not kept up. When they didn't keep up, now they're basically faced with useless land. You really can't build anything there without intruding on the people that live there now, so please take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate you let me come back up.
Absolutely.
As I stated before, I gave you a copy of the map, and I think there's a disproportionate number of apartment units in Antioch. These are, from my research, are not at or near capacity, so I don't see the need for more apartment units. I've seen the Antioch community decline over the years, I think is evidenced by the closing of Hickory Hollow Mall, which there was nothing wrong with the mall, was the difference in clientele, and so forth. I've seen this become something that the decisions that you make affect the whole community, not just Nashville Village, and that leads to tax dollars being lost. We're losing $1.76 million per year off of Hickory Hollow closing. It was valued at $40 million back in 2005. It's valued at, I think, $5.5 million now. Excuse me. My whole point is it cost us all money. I can say this from my background being a former fee appraiser. Also, I was with the Metro Assessors Office as a team leader for the valuation modeling department, and I'm also a rehabber and a landlord. So I have nothing against development, but I think it needs to be smart development. And I've seen the property values in Woodridge and in Nashville Village decline upwards of 30%, somewhere between 25 and 30%. I've got listings and so forth, and I'm running out of time, so I'll just get to it. I think apartments will make the property values continue to decline and make a bigger impact on that decline. I'm asking you to just help stop the decline in Nashville Village and in Antioch altogether. I think that an assisted living center would be a good neighbor. It would have a very low impact on traffic, and, thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Yes. Actually, we can keep on this first, and then we'll go to the.
Hello, good evening, Chairman McLean, fellow commissioners. Again, thank you so very much for your time this evening, again, your service to the city. I am Nigel Hodge. I am president of the Woodridge Homeowners Association, as well as a member of the Nashville Master Board. And I can just tell you that I grew up five minutes from this area. When I was a kid, over 25 years ago, I would fly kites on this area and go to the pond. And I can tell you that in the spirit of compromise, this community has come a very long way in trying to work with the developer, because again, we've come, as my neighbors, we have come accustomed to using this property as a park. One of the items, two points though to get to facts. I just want to give you that as context. If you look here at this property, there was nothing done to show setbacks. What we're concerned about, and we would prefer to have nothing built on this property, but if it is, we would like the recommendation to be zoned down to two stories, and here's why. That would reduce the density, and the problem is that in this property, there would have to be definitely setbacks, not only from Flintlock Court, but on the left on Nashville Boulevard. In addition, there would also need to be a buffer between where these apartments would be built and the pond. And as doing such, limiting that with two stories would allow for ample parking on the property, as well as ample guest parking as well. Our concern is that if the density is higher, that people will be parking along the street on Flintlock Court. And this property, there's already traffic that goes through this property, as well as traffic that comes down Nashville Boulevard. So, and obviously, we have not seen anything on the actual setbacks, but as you can see, both setbacks and buffers would need both setbacks and buffers would need to be on this property. So reducing that density would allow for ample parking on the actual property. And I will also just quickly add that, on the south side of Nashboro Boulevard, everything is two stories, and there's no precedent for apartments on the south side of Nashboro Boulevard. Thank you very much for your time, and Commissioner Cummings, we have new greens, so come out and play some golf with us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening again, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Howard Jackson. One of the things I did not mention when I spoke earlier this evening on Item 15, and now speaking on Item 16, was my major concern is crime, and specifically gun crime, okay? I do not live in a Nashboro property, my youngest daughter lives in that property. One of the things we discuss all the time is the number of gunshots that are going off in that development. And I ask her, "Where the gunshots coming from?" She says, "The apartments." She always tells me, "The apartments, the apartments." And recently, I started meeting with some people on Friday mornings to have a Bible study, and it just so happens, we talked about the gun crime one day, and this individual told me that he had actually worked in that complex in Nashboro for 10 years. He now resides on a property right outside of Nashboro, and he said he heard the gunshots all the time. All the time. That's not the quality of life I wanted when I came here, and that's not the quality of life that my neighbors want, okay? There's something that I took off the internet last night, and it sums up my feelings about this whole issue of apartments. And I understand the investment part that the owner has on the property, because I've been a Realtor since the 70s, so I understand that, but yet, I have concerns. Thieves love apartments. Apartments provide increased concentrated opportunity for a variety of crimes, including burglary, auto theft, car break-ins, vandalism, personal assaults, and robbery. A much higher ratio of crime occurs in apartment complexes than in residential neighborhoods. This is due to many factors, including population density, the high concentration of cars parked together. I'm familiar. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak, I'm Gwen Berkeley, I'm from 512 Waterford Place. I am in the area, I'm not necessarily in the Nashboro Village area, but I'm right there Smith Springs Road, so I'm in and out of that area all the time. And I'm going to make it quick, because I'm the last one, so I know everybody's tired. My concern, I'm just supporting this district, just because I'm in the next district over, so everything that happens in this district does affect us. And I'm just asking, why do we need more apartments? It's just a question for Antioch, why? We have a lot, and I know you all know that. I'm definitely for looking at something else, but I don't want my area that I recently moved into, only been there two years, never wanted to buy in the area, because that's the image that I knew of Antioch. It's full of apartments, it's full of crime, it's full of this, it's full of that. I live in a beautiful, beautiful neighborhood, and I love my neighbors, and I love being in Antioch. And I'm not ashamed now to tell people, "I live in Antioch." And I see that look on their face, and I go, "Oh no, that's not the Antioch that you think it is, you should come visit." So I'd like to still say that, and I'd like to say that by asking you not to bring in more apartments. Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for giving us your time this evening. If I could, could I have you bring up the four slides that Nigel brought up for you, please? My name is Elizabeth Henry, and I live at 1151 Nashboro Boulevard, which is just across from and right behind the parcel we talked about before. This property that we are talking about here, just like everyone has said, it's been mostly used as a park. We love having the ducks there, and every, all the geese. It's a very nice area, and we'd like to keep it that way. We don't need more apartments. If you see, I would also disagree with the four-story, two-story is plenty. As you can see from these, these are on the south side of Nashboro Boulevard, not on the same side as this has been, as this one is being proposed. Again, I would like to also not see anything put there, but if it is, the assisted living would be my choice, because that would fit in and could fit in with our community. Thank you for your time, and I hope you will consider Councilwoman's proposal that she is giving, all of you, and read that, and take a look at these slides. Thank you so much.
Sorry I'm back, I'm not going to take the full two minutes, though.
Have you already spoken on this item?
Yes, can I speak again?
No, sir.
No, sir, okay, sorry.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposite, or in favor of the application? Seeing none, Mr. Renner?
Thank you so much. I would like to agree with something that Councilwoman Johnson said, we have worked very hard on this. She has worked hard, we've worked hard with the members of the community, your staff has worked hard, I know I've worked harder than I wanted to. And we haven't been able to get to the end of this. And I do appreciate the members of Nashboro Village being here, I think they're sincere people, and they're concerned about the quality of their community, and we're proud of that, because, you know, to throw around a term that's been used too much lately, we built that. There's been about 750, 800 units of housing that we've been out, that we've built in that community since we've owned that property. We are not a big construction company with a worldwide or even a regional reach, we're a small company, and we've tried to do the right thing in there and to belt it properly. The reason that you went through the exercise earlier over the rules wasn't because we had hoped to irritate you or to make you spend your dinner hour here. The reason is that we have a very, very serious concern that the proposal that has been placed in front of you this evening is not possible. By the time you take the current six stories that have been proposed, you shrink them down to two stories, they are going to spread across that site. We don't have any, any confidence whatsoever that that can be done while meeting the standards that you have set and that the Metro Code sets in order to have a development that meets our laws. There has been no information submitted to you, there has been no site plan submitted to you showing that that can be done, there has been no parking plan showing that not only the normal standards of parking can be met, but also the higher standards of parking that Councilwoman Johnson has proposed. There has been no stormwater plan submitted to you, there has been no plan for the fire marshal being able to access this property with that much of the property developed. We are very concerned, and you should be very concerned, that you're being asked to approve what amounts to a pig and a poke. You will not be able to give the assurance to anyone, meeting your own responsibility to protect this community and to provide quality development, because you haven't been given the information that you need in order to say that, yes, this meets our responsibilities, this meets the statutes. No Metro Department has reviewed this, no one has told you this can be done. We believe it cannot, and for that reason, we'd ask you to disapprove it. Now, I would add something briefly, in that we have, again, worked with Councilwoman Johnson and her predecessor. We have agreed to come down to four during the Antioch Preslate Community Plan process. We agreed to bring the height down to four, because we were told that would be appropriate in the area. And again, as we had on the past commercial section, we agreed not only to do that in the case that there was a PUD revision filed, but we agreed to accept those as the standards today, that we would develop according to those standards today, even though we're not required to. We also agreed to additional connectivity, buffers, other standards, to improve the property, because again, we were trying to work with the residents. That has not been possible, some have been more willing to work with us than others. What we would ask you, though, is that if you decide to not disapprove this, but if you decide to approve it, we would, once again, and I've told Councilwoman Johnson this many times, we would abide by the staff's recommendations, because we believe they are appropriate, we believe that is something that can be accomplished, and we believe that you would meet your responsibility to the community by doing so. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion second, close the public hearing, all in favor, right? Motion carries.
I had two minutes left, and I thought I would maybe come back.
She has a minute nineteen.
Got a minute nineteen, according to the clock.
Thank you. Vastland has not submitted any information, and Vastland also acknowledged that they could not put a six-story on this land because of topography and other slope situations, et cetera. Vastland technically is at an elevation that is low in the PUD, but so is Lakeside Villas, as they share the same elevation as Site 14 and are less than a quarter mile from this parcel. Vastland should technically not be able to exceed this comparable development, which is on the southeast side of Nashboro, Site 14. The PUD is supposed to be designed in balanced form, the community is concerned about the traffic impact and the stress to the infrastructure and the loss of what has been the only small park space in the PUD, where people have been recreating for the last 20 years due to Vastland placing picnic tables and grills on this site. The Kroger was not originally in the plan for this PUD, which created traffic that is overbearing at times. The lighted bell in Nashboro was added due to the poor planning of the PUD and the increase in traffic over time. And what we have is a PUD that is now being impacted in a major way with proposed apartments. Thank you.
Thank you. The public hearing is closed.
Well, you know, these, this particular, these three bills or proposals really test the limits of Metro Government, in the Planning Commission and the role of Metro Council and PUDs and planning in general. You know, it's the age-old deal where you, a property owner has certain expectations when they buy a piece of property to be able to develop that piece of property. And given such a large area, of area of property, and the length of the PUD creates special circumstances, and while I am very sympathetic to the neighbors and, you know, things have changed over the last, you know, several decades that this project has been going on, I still am in the firm belief that there are certain expectations that property owners have when they buy a piece of property, regardless of the length of time that property sits But I'm also, you know, like I said, I'm sympathetic to both the owners of the property and also the neighbors. You know, ultimately, I think that the compromise, that the staff has done an outstanding job in trying to come up with something that's reasonable for both recognizing that there are inalienable rights that exist with the property owner, and working with the neighborhood and coming up with amendments. So me personally, I don't think that it's appropriate as submitted, but I do believe that it's much more appropriate with the staff recommendation, so I support the staff recommendation.
I'm also, as Commissioner Atkins said, troubled by this piece of legislation. I think the staff has done a very good job in amending it, and I'm going to support the staff's recommendations.
Judy.
I appreciate all of the work and the meetings that have gone on between the constituents, the council lady, and the owner, and the document that has been submitted and all the work that has gone into it. But looking at the staff's proposed amendments, you know, the amendments make good sense. I know it would be preferable that nothing be built on there, but that is really not an option, and probably these amendments to the proposal make the best sense. It's just a difficult and a convoluted issue before us. But, you know, I'm glad, it's not six stories, it's the four-story. And, you know, I know that there are some other desires, such as to have the independent living and those kinds of things, but that would clearly be up to the owner to want to do that.
So does the staff's amendment, removing the restriction on the type of multifamily development, does that take out item number one in the amendment? Does that take all of it? Like where it says, limited to assisted living, independent living, active adult living, and residential multifamily, does that take that entire sentence out?
No, it just removes the townhouse.
Okay.
So the multifamily remains and assisted living remains.
So, okay. So the, all right, so the development would be limited to assisted living, independent living, active adult 55 living, or residential multifamily, would be the way it would read?
That's correct.
Okay.
Is there a motion?
I move approval of the staff's recommendations with amendments.
Second.
Motion second, approve staff's recommendation with amendment, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
This is item 17 on your agenda. This is a request to amend Site 27 of the Nashboro Village PUD to add conditions applicable to the daycare use previously approved for the site. This site is on Nashboro Village Boulevard, east of Murfreesboro Pike. Staff is recommending disapproval of this amendment. The current zoning is RM6 with a PUD overlay district which permits a daycare use. The proposed zoning would add conditions applicable to the daycare center. And this is the approved site. In 2012, in March 2012, the council member initiated a PUD review. The Planning Commission recommended that Site 27 remain as approved for a daycare center, as it was an appropriate use for the RM policy in place at the time. In the recent update of the Antioch Preslate Community Plan, the policy continues to support this use, it's suburban neighborhood maintenance and some natural conservation on a creek that runs through it. And a special policy recommends that the daycare be developed in a manner consistent with all applicable state regulations, including regulations related to buffering and fencing. The proposed amendment would limit the number of children that would be permitted in the daycare. It would require compliance with the zoning code for parking and tree density, it would have a minimum landscape buffer around the player, and require fencing along Nashboro Boulevard. The policy specifies that the daycare should develop in a manner consistent with applicable state regulations. Daycares must be licensed by the state, and licensing regulations determine appropriate numbers of children that a daycare center can serve, based on a number of factors, and these should be used to determine the appropriate number of children for a daycare on Site 27. Under the zoning code, a daycare is permitted as a special exception under the RM6 zoning, and the underlying, which is the underlying district for this property, and the zoning code would permit a daycare for more than 75 children on this property. The parking, landscaping, tree density, and buffering are already required by the zoning code and would apply to a daycare on this site. If the outdoor player does not remain adjacent to Nashboro... If the outdoor play area does not remain adjacent to Nashboro Boulevard, this fencing would not, that is required under number four, would not be served to protect the play area. And any play area would require fencing and buffering, no matter where it was located on the property. If the Planning Commission recommends approval of this amendment, staff recommends certain changes, and these would include eliminating the maximum number of children and letting the state regulations determine that, the appropriate number for this daycare, and amending three for the landscape buffering around the play area. So again, staff recommends disapproval, but if approved, approve with amendments.
Hearing, and that will be allowed 10 minutes, and you can keep two minutes of it for rebuttal.
In the spirit of compromise, again, I have met with the steering committee and people within the community, and we are okay with deleting the first item that limits the number of children, because that would be required anyway. That was information that was provided by the Building Codes Division. And so those were included in the legislation as a result of communications with the Building Codes Division for Metro. In terms of the landscape buffer, I don't know anything about landscape buffer, B, D, C, whatever. That was something that was recommended by the Building Codes Division to protect the children, making sure that that was a minimum requirement, so that they would be safe, given the proximity of where the daycare is located in the PUD. So we would like for that to remain if all possible. If not, I would think they're going to require it anyway, because the conversation was with the Building Codes Division in coming up with those amendments. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the application? Seeing none? Who can speak in opposition?
Very briefly, I think we can support what Councilwoman Johnson just said. Basically, I believe that is the staff recommendation. We can support that. Thank you.
Is the motion to close the public hearing? Motion second, close the public hearing, all in favor, aye? Is there a motion?
To approve with amendments.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all for your time and your patience.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. No hearing reports? Okay. Anything from the council? Anything we need to know?
Just one thing that I'll hit. I'm going to pass out this, and I would like to, this is the process for the general plan. We met with the steering committee this morning, and all has the timeline. I would like the opportunity to go over this in some detail with the commission. I would be willing to do that at your convenience. I'd be willing to do it an hour before the next meeting or during the next meeting, whatever is your preference. But this, I think it's important the commission to understand kind of what the process is and what we're doing on this, so...
Why don't we sit that, we do one of two things. The next meeting, I believe, is December the 8th.
Correct.
We can meet an hour prior to that, or we don't have one meeting in...
Right, December.
December, if you want to have another meeting. Do you think you'd do it in an hour?
Yes. Uh-huh. We did an hour present, about 45 minutes with discussion.
Let's set that for 2:30.
Okay.
Then prior to the meeting, that'll give you an hour, and still give us 30 minutes for break, get over here. So this, he'll make a presentation in on the 2040 general plan at 2:30, prior to the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else wants to talk for a long time? Stay by yourself. Rejoin.